Okay, good evening, everyone. We are going to conduct our Legislative Caucus prior to the start of our legislative session. I will call the meeting to order at 6:15 PM. Mr. Truesdale will lead us in roll call. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Rawls, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Vice President Green. For communications this evening, we will hear from Mr. Jeffrey Nichols, CEO of the National Civil War Museum, followed by diversity breakdowns, shared by Ms. Joni Willingham, Director of Human Resources, and concluding with the City Council Year-End Review, shared by our research analyst, Mr. Cedric Humphrey. We will then open the floor to courtesy of the floor, followed by the approval of minutes, and this would be the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on December 11th, 2023. You will hear one committee report this evening. I will share the committee report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of December 13th, 2023. We do not have any ordinances for first reading. We have three ordinances for amendment: Bill 9 of 2023, Bill 10 of 2023, and Bill 12 of 2023. We have the same three bills for final passage or ordinances for final passage: Bill 9 of 2023, Bill 10 of 2023, and Bill 12 of 2023. Then, we will move to resolutions. We have Resolution 85 of 2023, which we will vote upon; Resolution 86 of 2023, which we will vote upon; Resolution 87 of 2023, which we will vote upon; Resolution 88 of 2023, which we will vote upon; Resolution 89 of 2023, which we will vote upon; Resolution 90 of 2023, which we will vote upon; and Resolution 91 of 2023, which we will vote upon. Is there any old business, councilmembers? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, Councilman Majors, and following his remarks, we will adjourn. So, everybody ready to get started? The time is 6:15 PM. I would like to officially call our legislative session to order. Please note, we're a little delayed in getting started. Harrisburg City Council hosted an executive session prior to the start of this legislative session. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels?
Here.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Lawson?
Here.
Mr. Majors?
Here.
Ms. Rose?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present, thank you. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Rawls.
Thank you, President Bowers. Good evening, everyone. I would like us all to take a moment and just reflect on those who may be going through something or those who may be having some troubled times, but also reflect on our unhoused neighbors with the weather being cold outside. Let's just please take a moment of silence for everyone, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Vice President Green.
Thank you, if we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Vice President Green. For communications this evening, we will begin with a presentation from Mr. Jeffrey Nichols, who serves as the CEO of the National Civil War Museum.
Well, thank you very much. Close enough. Thank you very much for having me here tonight. It's a pleasure to speak to all of you. Again, I'm Jeff Nichols. I'm the CEO of the National Civil War Museum. A little bit about me, I've been with the organization now for just over two years, started in September of 2021. Before that, I worked at museums in Washington, in Virginia, and my home state of Connecticut. It's a pleasure to be here, and I'm really enjoying what I'm doing here in Harrisburg. What I'd like to do tonight is just give you a brief update on some of the status of the museum, what's been happening there, what kind of financial shape we're in, what we're doing, a few of the events coming up, and some things we did this year, and a little bit about the building itself and the repair and maintenance that goes into that. As you all know, we are the 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization that was founded to operate the National Civil War Museum. Currently, we have six full-time employees, 13 part-time staff, and 13 board members, and we're open to the public around 355 days a year. Our annual budget is approximately $1.2 million, give or take, depending on the year.
Oh, wow!
And we welcome visitors from all 50 states and across the country. In fact, last year, we passed the 1,000,000th person to enter the building on a tour or for a special event or program. So, it's been a real pleasure to be here for that. Of course, with COVID, we all had our share of issues. Our visitation really did take a significant hit. In 2019, we had about 32,000 visitors, people coming for tours, school groups, bus tours. That dropped to 11,000 in 2020 during COVID, and this year, we look like we'll be up to 24,000. So, we're not back to where we were, but we're making progress. And unfortunately, this is sort of tracking with other sites like ours, not only regionally, but across the country. The main issue for that is school groups and bus tours. People don't seem to be as willing to get on a bus and go on a tour as they once were. So, those are some of the issues that we're facing. A few things that we did this year as we tried to continue to expand our program and what we offer. We had the Navajo Native American Dance Ensemble at the museum last spring. They also partnered, did a talk on the Navajo role in the Civil War, as well as what happened post-Civil War to that particular group. We have two free days that we offer annually. The first is in February to honor Black History Month and also President Lincoln's birthday, and then in November for Veterans Day. And we had Ephraim Slaughter American Legion posts out there this year in November to help us with a flag-raising ceremony in the park. We also have an annual Juneteenth event that we hold at the museum. Obviously, Juneteenth was sparked out of the Civil War, the ending of the Civil War. And we do one for, that's also a free day on Saturday. And we've partnered with Juneteenth HBG in the last couple of years. And particularly this year, we hosted the, and sponsored the keynote speaker, Dr. Mark Lamott Hill, at the museum. And just this past weekend, the Parks and Rec Department held a first-aid course in our ballroom for residents of Harrisburg. So, we're trying to utilize the museum as much as we can in very diverse ways. As a museum, obviously, we also have a lot of programs that we do related to books. There've been a lot of great books that have come out in this past year. We started earlier in the year with a new program called Civil Conversation. We would talk issues that were relevant in the Civil War and Reconstruction that are still relevant today. And Dr. Peniel Joseph from the University of Texas came to speak with, about his book, The Third Reconstruction, obviously Reconstruction being post-Civil War. He claims the second Reconstruction was the Civil Rights Era in the 60s, and we're going through the third today. We also do book talks. We had one recently with a historian named Ronald White and a book called On Great Fields, which is about the hero, one of the heroes of Gettysburg, Joshua Lawrence Chamberlain. And just the last week, we had a program on James Longstreet, who was one of the Confederate generals of the war. But as the war ended, he became a Republican and fought for equal rights between African-Americans. And the interesting Harrisburg connection, when Longstreet, post-war in 1867, became the head of the Louisiana State Militia, a gentleman named T. Morris Chester was one of his officers from right here in Harrisburg. And we're also working closely with Midtown Scholar on various book talks as well. So, we try to keep things diverse and moving in different directions. We do two temporary exhibits per year. This is one of them that opened last June and for Juneteenth, and it was on abolition. We cover lots of topics, from Frederick Douglass to the Underground Railroad and many other things. The artifact that's in the right side is, we believe, either a banjo or a guitar, some sort of string instrument that's part of our collection, a four-string. And it was made, we believe, by an enslaved person prior to the Civil War. So, we have a real great collection of artifacts that we're able to implement from time to time. Since at least 2009, the nonprofit has been really responsible for the maintenance of the building, and that was sort of codified a few years later. And now that the building is getting to its 23rd year, it's beginning, some of the artifacts, some of the items in the museum are beginning to show their age. Last October, one of our two boilers perished, and so, we had to raise money to purchase two new ones. We were able to do that, but only install one. We're still fundraising for the second. Water pump motor, air handler. The reason I have this photo up, that's the air handler that we had to put in the day before our major fundraising event. You notice it's painted gold. That's a good reason, it's a good color for it considering how much it costs. So, we have that, and updated fire alarm system, as well as coming up a fire suppression system that we're doing. So, we've put well over $700,000 into the building since 2009. And I also want to add that this year, we have had some issues with our parking lot, or the park has issues with the parking lot, retaining wall between the bridge, the former Bishop McDevitt's High School, and our parking lot. And Dan Snow, the city engineer, asked to close off part of that lot, which we did. Austin Griffin, who is here, was also part of that, and they've accommodated us by adding some additional parking spaces. So, we want to, again, thank the city staff for all their hard work to help us keep this place running efficiently. We also did an economic impact study this year through a grant for the first time, just to so, show exactly the impact the museum has on the community financially. So, directly or indirectly, the results from this study show that we are responsible indirectly or directly for about 105 jobs within the greater Harrisburg area, 4.6 million in income, 13 million economic output, and a little over $1 million in state and local tax revenue on an annual basis. So, in that sense, the museum has been an economic, a modest economic driver for the community. And as I mentioned earlier, we welcome visitors from all 50 states and in total, now about 35 countries that have toured the museum since we opened. And where we're going next, as I mentioned, the museum itself, being 23 years old, some of the galleries, which are also original, are beginning to show their age. Two years ago, we replaced all of the AV equipment in it, and now, we're going to go from gallery to gallery as fundraising allows, updating the content, updating the artifacts, exchanging artifacts, painting, doing all the basic things you need to do, as well as improving the lighting. And our ballroom as well is showing a bit of its age, so we're hoping to raise money to restore some of that. We also want to install that second boiler, and I should add that in the first two months of cold weather, October and November, our gas bill has dropped by 80% year over year. So, that old boiler was incredibly inefficient, so it's good to have the new one in place. Mainly, our main focus is to grow our donor base. We want to become as independent as possible. So, we are definitely trying to add new members and friends. And so, I spend a lot of my time meeting with individuals and trying to raise money. And that will continue. We also have a RACP grant that we rewarded from the state several years ago. We've been talking with City Hall off and on about trying to implement that. We've been trying to fundraise for it, but it's a challenge for our size as we're trying to maintain the organization and fundraise for that. So, we'll continue those conversations, and that money would go back into the park and hopefully into the building itself. If you've been familiar with it, you know that the rotunda of the building has leaked since it opened, and so, getting that repaired is critical. And also, growing our programming and visitation. So, all of that is what lies ahead of us. Again, I want to thank everyone in the park and the city maintenance. They've done a wonderful job to support the museum. Thank you for having me, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for your presentation, councilmembers. Are there any questions for Mr. Nichols? Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Mr. Nichols, for joining us this evening. I appreciate you addressing the retaining wall in between. That was a huge issue. Is there any plan to move forward as far as action, or is that?
We're sort of one of the players in this. It is a city-owned property, obviously, as well. I think we're hoping that maybe the RACP could play a role, because it is intended to go into the park.
Absolutely.
Finding the matching funds, frankly, is the challenge.
Yeah, but you'd be more than willing to work with.
Absolutely, 100%, you bet.
Thank you so much.
Anytime you want.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, I didn't. I was just going to say thank you for joining us tonight as well and mentioning the wall. That was a question on a few residents' minds, so I appreciate you pointing that out and taking consideration and caring about it. So, thank you, and thank you for the presentation. It was wonderful.
You're welcome. Thank you for having me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilman Lawson, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's fine. And thank you, you know, again, for the great presentation. And you may have touched on this, because I seen you were showing some of the students that were coming through.
Yes.
But is there a current, like, partnership with the Harrisburg School District at all?
No. And honestly, it's always been a challenge, to be frank, to get Harrisburg students into the museum on a regular basis. Right now, it's a challenge to get any students in because of all the issues they've been facing over the last couple of years. But anything we could do to partner with the City Council or with the Education Department to make a more concrete relationship, we'd love to do it. So, I think, you know, I've met, when I first arrived here, with the superintendent of schools and others, but it was right after COVID, and there was plenty of other things to worry about than visiting a museum. But we definitely want more students to come, and particularly Harrisburg students.
Okay, great. I can't speak for the school district, and I really can't speak for the Chair of Parks and Rec, but I think she would be willing to work with the museum and trying to figure out a way. If we can't do it with the school district, maybe we can do it with our summer program and getting students in there from the city.
We have a lot of spaces, you all know. It's your park, after all, and your building. But we would love to do more programs with kids and particularly Harrisburg. There's a lot of stories to tell that involve Harrisburg, but also in the broader aspect of the war, so we'd be happy to do that.
Yeah, that would be great. Do you have a card or something you can leave? Maybe I'll give you a call, we could try to put something together.
Absolutely. Should I bring it up to you?
I don't know. Yeah, that's fine.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Okay, seeing and hearing none, thank you very much.
Thanks for having me.
We will now move forward with our diversity demographics, shared by Ms. Joni Willingham, Director of Human Resources. Good evening. Just to provide some context before you begin, during the latter part of our budget hearings, those presentations included the diversity demographics for each of the bureaus or departments. But some deferred directly to HR for that information. So, that's what you're going to be hearing this evening.
Good evening, everyone. You want to break down each department or bureau? Or do you want the overall? I have the overall, and I do have some of the breakdown from...
If you could share both, please? If we could start with each department or bureau first, and then the overall?
Okay, I don't have any percentages. Council has three employees. Two are black, one is white. The mayor's office has seven, eight employees. Seven are black, one is white. Controller's office has two employees. Both are white. Treasury has seven employees. One is black, five are white, one is Hispanic. Law Bureau has nine employees, two black, seven white. Finance has nine employees. Three black, five white, one Asian. Communications has six employees, one black, three white, two Hispanic. IT has six employees. Five white, one Asian. HR has seven employees. Five are black, one is white, one is Hispanic. Tax and Enforcement has seven employees. Two are black, five are white. Planning has three employees, all are white. Codes has 18 employees. Five black, 12 white, one Asian. Police non-uniform has 32 employees. Nine are black, 18 white, three Hispanic, two Asian. Police uniform is 13 black, 113 white, eight Hispanic, three Asian, totaling 137. The Fire Bureau is comprised of six black, 85 white, four Hispanic, and two Indian, giving them a total of 97. Engineering has 10 employees. One black, eight white, one Hispanic. Vehicle Maintenance has seven employees. Six white, one Hispanic. Facilities has eight employees. Two black. Three Hispanic and three white. Parks and Rec has eight, and this is only Parks and Rec as it is the recreation. Up at the mansion, they have eight employees. Five are black, three are white. Public Works has 68. 48 black, nine white, 11 Hispanic. Park Maintenance has 19. Five black, eight white, six Hispanic. And Building and Housing has 15. Nine black, three white, and three Hispanic. The overall diversity count for the city overall is we have 1.58% of Asian, 25.55% of black, 8.71% Hispanic, 0.40% of Indian, and 63.76% are white. The percentage of our workforce that lives in the city within the corporate limits of the city of Harrisburg is 21.2%.
And with the percentage of the workforce that lives in the corporate limits of the city, 21.2%, are some departments or bureaus, do they employ more city employees or city residents?
It varies. Majority of them, I think, are within Public Works.
Okay. Okay, thank you for that information. Councilmembers, are there any questions regarding the diversity demographics? Okay, seeing and hearing none, thank you very much.
Did you want the, what's asked about other languages?
Oh, yes. I'm sorry, I didn't know if you had that as well. Yes.
Yes. From what I calculated out, we have 31, 37 Spanish-speaking employees. However, that count may not be accurate because it is not required that they provide us that information. We also have employees that speak, eight employees that speak other languages, such as Polish, Russian, Hindi, conversational Italian, Farsi, French, and Cantonese, German, and that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Daniels, did you want to ask about the language line? Okay, okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Our final addition for the communication this evening, we will hear from City Council's research analyst, Mr. Cedric Humphrey, excuse me, who will share a City Council Year-End Review.
Thank you. I'm going to be going over the 2023 Harrisburg City Council Year-End Review, which will be available on our website tomorrow. So, the year started out with welcoming Councilman Lawson to the chambers. On January 25th, Councilman Robert Lawson was sworn in by the Honorable Judge Sonia McKnight. The Honorable Robert Lawson was chosen from a large pool of candidates to fill the vacancy left by former Councilman Dave Mattson, who has so graciously joined us here tonight. Councilman Lawson got right to work as the Public Works Committee Chair. City Council also held an orientation and retreat in January. It served as an opportunity for a council to get together and set goals for the upcoming year and directly connect with the leaders of the various departments outside of the traditional council meeting setting. Council members were treated to presentations from department directors, as well as representatives from the Pennsylvania Municipal League. And Michael Lombardo, the mayor of Pittston, Pennsylvania, was invited as a special speaker. In early April, council hosted three town hall listening sessions to receive community input regarding how the ARPA funding, the $25 million that was awarded to the city through the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, should be dispersed. The meetings were not only productive, but they were informative as they helped to shine a light on what the Harrisburg community values and prioritizes and what they wanted to see with the funds. Going over some of the legislative highlights, this year, council considered 12 bills and a total of 91 resolutions. One priority that was made by council very early on was to ensure that the city's boards and commissions were fully functioning. Over the course of the year, appointments were made to the Environmental Advisory Committee, the Planning Commission, the Audit Committee, the License and Tax Appeal Board, and the Housing Code Board of Appeals. And then, there's a couple of pictures there on the bottom from several organizations around the Capitol area who were recognized for their work and their contribution to our community throughout the year. Regarding events in the community, you know, it's a lot of hard work here in this chamber, but City Council has to have a little bit of fun as well. Over the course of the year, the council participated in the St. Patrick's Day and the Harrisburg Holiday Parades that took place downtown. Gave away over 200 backpacks of school supplies before the 2023, 2024 school year at the, not showing up, at the Public Safety National Night Out. Partnered with the Harrisburg Fire Department to hand out over 300 treat bags at our annual pre-trick-or-treat night and continued into year two of Hot Spot Saturdays. An initiative Councilman Rodriguez has spearheaded to mitigate illegal dumping and restore Harrisburg's natural beauty. And there were two new exciting twists for us this year. There were two policy work sessions held over the course of the year. In March, we brought together stakeholders to discuss a short-term rental ordinance in the city. And then, in June, we convened to hear a summary of Harrisburg's disparity study, hoping to bridge the study with work and discuss steps required to bring forth an ordinance. And also, the introduction of quarterly reporting. This has gone on throughout the year, but with the goal of being better prepared for budget season, council invited in department leaders to present at meetings quarterly. These quarterly reports were not only appreciated for their help during the already tenuous budget season, but informative because they allowed council to be aware of the important work that each department does throughout the year. And once again, Harrisburg City Council is nothing without the community that it serves. You can join us for meetings here in the City Council chambers every first and third Tuesday of the month at 5:30 PM for work sessions, and then, every second and fourth Tuesday at 6:00 PM. You can also follow and interact with all of our social channels. Our Facebook link is posted, our Instagram handle is posted, and the YouTube... um, and the YouTube link where you can live stream all of our meetings is also there. Um, and then you can also check out the city calendar for exciting events, um, at harrisburgpa.gov/special-events.
Thank you very much for, um, sharing our year review. I think we're so engrossed in the work that sometimes it's nice to look back and to see everything that we did over the course of a year. So thank you very much for sharing that for us. And as you mentioned, it will be available on the city council's webpage, like a link like last year's?
Yeah, a link on the button on the bottom of the webpage.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Humphrey? Councilman Rodriguez?
Um, Sid, Mr. Humphrey, great job as always. Appreciate having someone like you on the team and covering the year. It looks amazing. So thank you. Um, and I understand through the oversight, sometimes we could miss a few things, but I'd be remiss if I didn't ask if we could add the CLIAC appointments, because they waited a grueling long night that night. And, um, we did, as far as council and public safety, appoint all five of ours. So I think maybe if we can add that possibly, that'd be great.
Sure, we can.
Thank you.
We no problem.
Anything else? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We will now move to courtesy of the floor. Just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. Please state your name and address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You'll have two minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper. And I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening, council. Pam Parsons, Eighteenth and Holly. And President Bowers, if I go a little bit over, I hope you will give me some leeway. I sat either here or at home watching on television for a total of over fifteen hours. What I would like to address tonight is, um, I would like to ask you to strike the C S A program from the budget. It is clear that that is a program run amok. I sat here for an excruciating two hours and I listened to, um, clearly a program without any goals, no training, and it is exactly what we feared. As you know, some of you were on council when that was originally designed, and it was a knee-jerk reaction to calls in twenty twenty for changing the way we police. But the program that we have is not it. It wasn't what people wanted at the time. And now we're talking about, um, eighteen-year-olds with high school educations, no skills, and no training for them, doing things like breaking up fights, uh, putting out fires, intervening in domestic disputes, and some other things that really horrified me when I heard it sitting here on Tuesday night. This is not an appropriate program. It was ill-conceived, it is poorly designed, it is designed to fail, especially for the directors. We've had three directors in three years, and no director can be effective because of the way it is designed, that it does not allow them to have some very essential functions like sitting in on hiring decisions. And finally, my greatest fear is that this would become, as I heard someone say, junior policemen. And that is exactly what we have, police light, um, in what looks like police uniforms, driving official vehicles without much supervision, again, because of the problems that exist. And my nightmare is that someone is going to get hurt. I see this program as it currently exists, opening up the city to great liability. But worse for that is a member of the public or a C S A getting seriously injured or dying in the course of intervening where one should not be. If we are hell-bent in having a program like this, my suggestion would be to move it into the fire department. Actually, create something new and move it to the fire department. Because barbecues are not a goal. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment?
Kelsey White. I live in Midtown. Uh, four days ago, the federal government sounded the alarm on what we've been trying to tell the city for the last year. Uh, the HUD annual data shows that in the last year homelessness is up twelve percent. This comes at a time where COVID emergency funding is ending, uh, rental prices in the city are soaring, and many folks are experiencing homelessness for the first time in their lives. Just yesterday, we heard again that Harrisburg is the third hottest rental market in the nation. Some hear that figure and clap, thinking, thinking it's a success. Uh, and the rest of us who know better fear those who are already, for those who are already white-knuckling it to keep a roof over their heads, um, in a city that refuses to acknowledge the current housing crisis. A month ago, Bethesda Mission told us that they were already at capacity. And today I spent my lunch break calling five other shelters who either told me the same thing. They need me to schedule an appointment at a later date or didn't pick up my phone call altogether. I found two available beds, but only if I was fleeing domestic violence. The city is worried about another Mulberry Street. And in my hands is a list of nearly four hundred names who signed the petition to make sure emergency sanitation measures are taken to prevent that. Yet we have yet to see any action in the last two weeks. Elections in Harrisburg are often decided by less than four hundred votes. All of you have won an election at some point in time in your careers with less votes. The mayor herself should know this better than anyone. Tonight, the people in this room plan to pass a budget that includes no provisions for emergency services or housing for the unhoused, but will sign off on a police budget that has nearly doubled in just three years. We can't keep kicking this can down the road and I hope that housing, or in hope that housing spontaneously appears. You all wanted this job and we trusted you to do it. We're here to remind you that the folks in Riverfront and in Penn Dot are your constituents too. And residents of Harris-
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment on the right?
All right, Brandon Basom uptown. I'll try to keep it brief this time as I realize that the administration and their spokesperson can lie endlessly, but we get a two-minute limit. Uh, while I appreciate having a moment of silence for unhoused neighbors, the silence is kind of a problem. I'm sure they prefer a full-throated commitment to keeping the police from moving them by threat or force. Public safety isn't just constantly inflating police budgets while the residents, uh, while the residents who need those resources suffer. We'd like the city to decriminalize camping in the public parks as we have decriminalized other victimless crimes. As the weather gets colder, taking away a vulnerable person's shelter is immoral, cruel, and possibly even murderous. We would also like the city to come up with a detailed plan, including sufficient resources, to achieve it for the inevitable sweep of the Penn Dot encampment for the eighty-three expansion. There is no reason to once again wait until the last minute so that Mayor Williams and his spokesman, Ms. Zell, can pretend some imaginary urgency requires whatever drastic action they propose to address that entirely foreseeable situation. And to comment on the police budget, we keep hearing that they can't fill roles, that they have so many offices they can't hire, that they're down so many people, so why are we giving more money for less officers? It just seems ridiculous. So maybe we could consider putting some of that money towards the people who actually need it and not just doing violence with them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Matthew Kosik. I, uh, live in the Midtown area, Harrison Third. I'm here to comment about Riverfront Park. I've noticed over the past, probably about three years, I've noticed that the city endeavors to engage in some sort of eviction campaign against houseless folks in Harrisburg. First, it was, uh, over at the Presbyterian Church at Market Square, then it was over at Mulberry Street. Now it seems to be with the highway expansion. It's going to be Penn Dot eventually. But this year it seems to be Riverfront. And frankly, at this point, I'm of the opinion that the city is pursuing a, uh, a program of displacing people until they die. And I think that that's the goal. And I think that's a really bad goal. So it should probably be stopped. Camping should be decriminalized. Assets should be removed from other programs that are basically pointless or being mismanaged. Sounds like this, uh, C S A program is one of them. And, uh, yeah, I just think it's a, it's kind of a weird game to just keep shuffling people around until they get too old, or they get sick, or they live in harsh conditions, and then they end up dead. And that kind of seems like the program for right now. So.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right that would like to offer public comment? It's a lot lower this time.
Uh, I'm Penny Packer. I live in Uptown area. Definitely echoing what's going on over there and what folks are saying. But I did some other research today. Uh, I looked up the Airbnb's in Harrisburg, and just on that site alone, I got over two hundred hits in the Midtown area. So I'm curious on how these Airbnb's that aren't paying the same property taxes as hotels aren't employing anybody and adding anything to the economy are paying it forward to the city, especially because they're actually taking residential housing and turning it into pseudo-hotels. So I'm curious if anybody's going to come up with any plan for them to pay it forward and even perhaps fund programs for houseless communities or rental assistance for people here in the city. Because like we said, it's one of the hottest markets in the country. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to my right that would like to offer public comment?
I don't know how to use this.
There you go.
Um, hello, my name is, uh, Toby, Toby S. I am a homeless resident. I, uh, live in a tent, um, up near Penn Dot. I, I just don't understand, um, why, how, or how a budget can be passed without any, um, money going to homeless, uh, services and homeless help. I've, I've already tried all of the shelters, uh, as, uh, the other people said. Bethesda Mission is filled. Almost everything is already filled. And I'm honestly sick and tired of, uh, people recommending me a whole bunch of stuff that I've already tried, or I went there and I got banned for whatever reason it may be. Um, I still don't know why I'm banned from most places. I, I just feel like there should be a lot more assistance going to, um, homeless people in Harrisburg, Pennsylvania. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on my right that would like to offer public comment?
Um, so I just wanted to comment really briefly about hearing some of the things she had to mention about-
Can you please state your name? Excuse me.
Oh, my gosh, I'm so sorry. I'm really bad.
Your name and your address. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, the vicinity in which you live, please. Thank you.
Sure, uh, Kareem Morrissey, Midtown area. So I wanted to talk about the C S A programs because there are a lot of community policing-oriented initiatives that are being pushed and promoted and funded, um, all the time. And a lot of them do end up being duplicative to some other efforts that they're trying to mention. You know, there are co-responder programs that the city funds as well. They end up going to a lot of the same calls that the C S A program does as well. And unfortunately, some of the folks going into that, um, you know, it does end up being a junior policeman thing. It becomes a way in which these programs are a way in which police, uh, offset some of these quote-unquote "social work" capacities in which law enforcement traditionally has been responsible for, um, to these other little things so that they can focus on, you know, I don't know, kicking down doors or drug raids or whatever, whatever else they're doing, right? Um, but essentially what, and much what you brought up is they're inherently untrained for these positions because of what law enforcement training entails. Um, and, you know, it, we have to ask ourselves what policing is to us and what it takes to have a safe community. Uh, community safety doesn't come from police light, as you mentioned, but investing in protective neighbor networks, uh, allowing ownership, promoting diversion programs, and decriminalizing, uh, things in the city like camping on Riverfront Park, uh, that's what we need. Um, so definitely take that into consideration. I wasn't going to speak tonight until she brought that stuff up. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on the right that would like to offer public comment? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone in the middle section? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, anyone to my left?
Good evening. My name is Clarissa Freeman. I am, um, a resident of the Bellevue Park area. And I'm just here tonight, uh, with my family. My son Wyatt Majors and my mother-in-law Mary Grace Majors want to commend, uh, Councilman Robert Lawson and Councilman Wes Majors on their time on city council. So that's why we're here tonight to support. You know, you have a lot of work ahead of you all, um, the council going forward, but just wanted to congratulate you all on the work that you've done thus far. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else to my left? Okay, seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward. Oh, we have one in the middle now.
Apologies, I missed my cue. Um, but, uh, Dave Mattson, two-three-zero-four Chestnut Street. First, I just want to congratulate, congratulate council on a fantastic year. I got to join you on a few of those, um, projects and, uh, just want to say it's always a pleasure working with all of you in a new space. But, um, do miss attending here. Do miss, uh, believe it or not, I missed the budget hearings and, uh, hearing all the great work and, um, you know, just seeing what our great departments have been doing. And, uh, but I'm actually here tonight to congratulate Councilman Lawson and Councilman Majors on a fantastic, uh, public service career and have some fine proclamations for you both. Um, so that I wanted to give on behalf of me and Representative Kim personally thanking you on behalf of the delegation for all of your fine work. And, uh, I know this won't be the last part of public service that you do, but certainly appreciated your time on council and just know that we're all very, very proud of you as a community. And thank you for everything you've done. And, uh, I'll give the clerk the-
Okay, thank you. We will now move forward with our meeting agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes. That's the approval of the minutes for the legislative session that occurred on December eleventh, two thousand and twenty-three. Council members, are there any revisions to those meeting minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. We will now move to reports of committee, the sole committee report this evening. I will deliver on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session that occurred on Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. On Wednesday, December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, the Administration Committee met to discuss three resolutions. Excuse me, four. Resolution eighty-seven of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution appointing Mr. Ernst Baltimore Junior, or Mr. Pete Baltimore Junior to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council. Resolution eighty-eight of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution appointing Ms. Catherine Scott to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council. Resolution eighty-nine of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution appointing Ms. Rafika Mohammed to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council. And resolution ninety-one of two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution appointing Ms. Pamela Parson to serve on the Environmental Advisory Council. Prior to the appointees answering any questions from council, I shared, uh, the role of the Environmental Advisory Council, which is pursuant to ordinance number six of two thousand and eighteen. The Environmental Advisory Council, or more commonly referred to as the E A C, was reorganized in order to better carry out the mission of providing information and as a forum for discussing environmental issues impacting the city of Harrisburg. Pursuant to section two dash five zero nine point two of the codified ordinances of the city, the E A C shall be comprised of seven volunteer members, of which three are appointed by the mayor and four are appointed by city council. E A C members must reside in the city, and they are appointed to serve a term of three years unless otherwise reme- and they are appointed to serve a term of three years unless otherwise removed. So all four of council's potential appointees, uh, terms shall begin on January first of two thousand and twenty-four and expire on January first of two thousand and twenty-seven. All of the potential appointees were present. They introduced themselves and shared a little bit about their interest in serving on the EAC, and shared their passion, uh, around environmental justice and other environmental issues they've been involved in. Council members asked questions regarding any areas of conflict of interest, which none of the potential appointees had any known conflicts of interest. Uh, there was a question for the solicitor if, uh, four council members constituted a quorum. Uh, there was a question regarding education and outreach to residents, where each potential appointee shared goals and the impact that they hoped to make, uh, through their service on the EAC. I would recommend my colleagues to support resolutions eighty-seven, eighty-eight, eighty-nine, and ninety-one, as all of these individuals are very, very passionate about environmental issues and environmental justice in our city, and they all have something unique to offer, uh, to the EAC. So this concludes the work and the report of the Administration Committee. We do not have any ordinances for first reading. We have three ordinances for amendment. We'll begin, oh, excuse me. Well, thank you very much. We are, have been in receipt, um, of an email from Mr. Baltimore noting that he does in fact have a conflict of interest, so he would like to rescind his, um, appointment to the EAC. Okay, so we will, uh, move forward with our meeting agenda. As I mentioned, we have three ordinances for amendment. We will begin with Bill nine of two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill nine, twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance establishing the budget for the municipal government of the city of Harrisburg for the year two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you very much. Council members, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules for discussion.
So moved.
Is there a second? Thank you. I will defer to our Budget and Finance Committee Chair, Vice President Green.
Thank you, President Bowers. Uh, we will be having a presentation this evening from the Finance Department, just going over some of the questions that were asked during the budget hearing, as well as going over some of the, uh, end-of-the-year projections for two thousand and twenty-three, as well as some of the revenue projections from two thousand and twenty-four, uh, proposed budget. Um, also, before we get to that, I will note, we did receive a letter from the ICA, uh, and I will go over some of the highlights from that letter because I think it will, uh, tie in nicely to this presentation that we're gonna receive from the, uh, Finance Department. So, um, one of the points that was raised, it says that "Proposed twenty-twenty-four budget includes notable revenue increases above the, those provided in the city's five-year financial plan as approved by the authority on October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-three. Please note that pursuant to Act one-twenty-four, after the budget is adopted, the city shall submit the enacted budget to the authority as a proposed revision to the plan." It also says, um, makes reference to comments that the Controller's Office had, um, in letter on September twenty-eighth, or excuse me, September eighteenth, about the five-year plan, saying that, uh, in his opinion, those were, those revenue projec- projections were quite optimistic. Uh, the next point says the proposed budget includes use of fund balance transfer from the general fund, leaving the, leaving it precariously low at seven percent at the end of two thousand and twenty-four, uh, because it's used, the transfer is used to cover capital improvements, and it's, it is unacceptable, uh, relative to our focus on avoiding true budget deficits. And then the last point says the Neighborhood Service Fund also draws, draws on the fund balance again, though within the increase in fees, it should mitigate in future years. Uh, the financial viability of the Neighborhood Service Fund remains a major concern for the authority. I believe this presentation from the Finance Department will address some of these points that was brought up by the ICA. So, uh, I will turn it over to our Finance Department to go over some of these projections. Thank you.
Mr. McCutcheon will do the, um, presentation. The, the first presentation.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council members. Brian McCutcheon, accounting manager. Uh, thank you, President Bowers, uh, Vice President Green. And again, uh, Chair Green, thank you for the meeting today, to do the overview and to get a better sense of, uh, where we are in two thousand and twenty-three and where we're going next year. This first slide, uh, schedule up on the screen is two thousand and twenty-three projection, and of course, we're getting there. We're, uh, we've completed our check runs for the month of December, uh, and also our, our payroll, uh, expenditure, it's, it's, it's happening this week, of course. And, uh, our revenue is booked through, uh, the middle of the month. But what I was able to do is take and expand upon that and to project it out because now it's a little bit easier, uh, with where we are. So this first schedule shows that, uh, for two thousand and twenty-three, uh, actual to budget. What stands out, the highlighted amounts, in, in particular, for the year, we're projecting a three-point-nine deficit. And when you reduce that by beginning of year, reduce beginning of year cash by that, we come down to the nineteen-point, almost nineteen-point-two million. Now, that is a, a sizable difference from what was, uh, worked out and submitted to the ICA in a five-year plan, much lower than that. And really, when you look at the budget column, which is a closer, uh, image of what we did for the five-year, uh, the, the budget amount shows a projected year-end cash balance of, of eleven-point-five. And, and then you factor in the encumbrances at the end of this year projected. They, uh, where they are right now, they, they, they won't change, um, dramatically. But that brings, it brings it down to the budgetary fund balance, factoring in those commitments that are still there, that we say will be there at the end of the year. But, uh, again, a stronger cash position. And when you evaluate, the, uh, the, the difference column on the right represents really the savings, if you will, where during the year, the sense was we would be, uh, utilizing fund balance to the tune of fourteen-point-eight, fourteen-point-nine million. And that's reflected down below in that additional reconciliation. And again, the seven million, six ninety is, is that, that, uh, that lessening of that need to utilize fund balance. Again, the, the, the thing that really stands out, I mentioned the cash, but focusing on, uh, the, under the additional rec, the, um, the, the actual budgetary use of beginning cash fund balance, seven million, one eighty-seven. Uh, if you think about that, um, the, the way I've been, I've been viewing that, the best way I could describe that is if you remember the AMBAC payment that was done at the, at, uh, back in March, which was eight-point-three-three-five million. Uh, so despite that payment, we still achieved, um, a, a use, a budgetary use that's lower, even lower than the AMBAC payment. We, our focus was that we knew going in, that was an acceptable use of fund balance to finally clear the decks of, of that significant debt. So to, 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 to do that, and then to end up with a cash position of almost nineteen-point-two, and even further reduce it by the encumbrances of, uh, not quite sixteen million, is, is, is a positive ending result for the city, uh, going forward. So that's, uh, that's the scenario or the, the, the presentation for two thousand and twenty-three projection. And Chair Green, can I move on to the, the, the revenue analysis, or do you wanna?
Uh, are there any questions regarding the two thousand and twenty-three projections? Seeing two thousand and twenty-three projections. Okay, when we, uh, had a conversation earlier, we kind of broke things down a little bit, um, as to where we saw our savings at and what our, our underspend was for the current year. Uh, is that something you could present, throw in next before we move on to revenue? Or if not, I can go over my notes.
Oh, no, no, um, no, uh, uh, I was remiss. Thank you for that. Focusing too much on the, the, the year end. But on that, that column on the far right is what she's referring to, and that, that is very worthwhile going over, uh, projected revenue for the year. We ended up being two-point-two under budget. And the, the fact, the main factors that include that, uh, re- represent our, uh, our real estate tax revenue, uh, coming in, uh, under budget by approximately one million dollars, uh, for two thousand and twenty-three. There's still, uh, there's still a few more days where we would expect to receive some year-end typical deposits, but they're not, uh, I, I don't anticipate those to be huge. The two other pieces that make up the, the under-budget performance include, uh, eight-hundred thousand, not drawn down from the Neighborhood Service Fund for, Services Fund for administrative-related charges. And we, we simply viewed that as, even though it's in our revenue budget, uh, we, really focusing on, on the side of being more prudent, because that fund already has factored into it a use of fund balance, we didn't want to further exacerbate that. So we held off on that. And also another significant item would be four-hundred thousand dollars under-budget performance by police extra duty. I, I think we, we, in this year's budget, we, we projected too high of one-point-five million, and really, the result for two thousand and twenty-three is gonna be closer to one-point-one. So that, that's the revenue shortfall when it comes to a, actual and budget. On the expense side, uh, this is, uh, a, a better number in the sense that we, our actual expenses came under budget by approximately nine-point-nine million. And really, there's four main pieces that make up that. Always, we always tend to have unused personnel budget, uh, that ends up at, at the end of the year. And that total, um, for, for two thousand and twenty-three is, uh, one million, one hundred and forty thousand. And that's spread over various departments within the general fund. Police is a big piece of that, but there are also other departments that include that, uh, that less-than-budget, uh, result. That's personnel. In services, uh, the total is, uh, two-point-one million. And there, there are four main pieces that make up that. This, in, in, in the services major object, we include, uh, litigation claims or, or, or settlement amounts that happen, you know, when they happen, we don't know when. It's a tough thing to predict, but we actually did favorably this year where we, we did not have to utilize two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of, uh, put forth budget for twenty-three. Uh, another legal item includes the incinerator subpoena records matter. Quite a significant piece of budget in twenty-three, two million, but as it works out, only, uh, approximately one-point-one million of expenditure occurred, um, including an encumbrance at, at, at the end of this year. So that, that's a very favorable difference on, on both settlement and, and legal litigation. And then two main departments, police and, and parks and rec and, and facilities, each, uh, did not utilize budget, budget savings of approximately two-hundred thousand dollars each. So those four items roughly make up the two-point-one million in savings for services. The third major object category would be supplies, and that's right around one million dollars in, in, uh, budget savings for the year. That's very consistent with the previous two fiscal years, twenty-two and twenty-one. Uh, lastly, our other category, which mainly includes, mostly includes capital expenditures and interfund transfers. That's the biggest chunk of the nine-point-nine million. Uh, five-point-five million relates to that particular category. And the, the main thing about that includes, uh, capital expenditures, including, uh, what we still anticipate for, uh, the, the rebuild or the restoration of the Broad Street Market property. And also, an, an amount that was a little over a hundred thousand dollars for interfund transfer that, which was not needed from general fund to the Capital Projects Fund. Uh, that was specifically for the State Street, Streets and Roads project. So those four subtotals among those four major objects, that, uh, what I just cited totals to nine-point, uh, nine million, eight-hundred-and-fifty thousand, which is the, the bulk of that, uh, savings, uh, budget to actual and expense.
Thank you very much for that.
I'm finally done with that one.
Are there any questions regarding this?
I guess, one, one question is, I know it's, I know we're, you know, looking at, trying to put estimates, but how do we, how are we constantly over on the police? Like, how do we constantly over budget for what we expect in a, in a, in a fiscal year?
I know we budget, um, based on expectation for, uh, you know, the, the, filling those positions, uh, in, in full. Yeah, an- another thing that, that we've thought about is trying to get a better sense of maybe timing, if, you know, the positions are there and they're included properly in Position Control, but maybe there's a, a, uh, maybe a more fine-tuning where we could estimate if, if, if it's not gonna take effect, any one position for the beginning of the year, it could be considered to reduce, uh, a full year's worth, in other, in other words, allocate. Uh, but I, I can't give you specifics on, uh, personnel lines when it come, when it comes to police. Uh, I wasn't too tapped into that side of the, the budget prep, but, um, I'll, I'll pause here if Marino or, or Tim wanna add anything further.
That's exactly correct. Um, ultimately, it's the timing of when the, uh, when the, when the, excuse me, the academy classes are due. I think their academy classes start at the, the latter half of the year, June, July-ish. Um, so if we can, uh, ultimately budget for, to be a partial, as opposed to a full year, then I could help tighten up the overage for police.
Okay, thank you, because I, I just know, just from, even just a perception point, and just to some of the points that were made by folks earlier, it's usually a budget that may look a little higher than what a budget, but ultimately, we don't necess- our, our numbers don't always add up at the end of the year in terms of what we budgeted versus what we're actually spending on police. And if we need to, you, we, we've constantly been used to budget reallocations, and I don't think any fo- folks would mind reallocating money for, you know, for the purpose if we needed to fill a position, rather than having a, I guess, puffed up in a, in a way, budget for there on the front end and not seeing the actual expenditures, right, coming from where you.
And, uh, well, I don't know if Dan can speak to this a little more, or, or the solicitor. Um, I know earlier Dan said that, uh, we budget for all of the police positions due to the police contract. And so we budget for all the positions. Uh, this year, we did try, they did try to budget for the positions, looking at when they expect them to start.
To start, okay.
And then at that point, they're able to kind of reduce it some, but that they budget for all the positions because they're in the union contract, and that way they're funded. Uh, I did kind of talk with, um, during the meeting, I kind of talked to Dan about the idea of, I don't know if it's like a real term or not, but I'll, I'll, I'll make it up, of like active budgeting, which is like throughout the year, looking at how we can reallocate funds to provide services to residents or, um, get needs that met for the city, uh, rather than having large budget surpluses at the end of the year because I think it's fiscally irresponsible to have these large chunks of money at the end of the year, uh, especially when we're to the point where we don't have this debt that we need to put large chunks on, uh, and we can use that money kind of to provide better services to the residents.
Right, okay.
I, I should emphasize too, just to be clear, that nine-point-nine million, of course, I went through, it's not, it's not all personnel. The personnel piece is the one-point, uh, one million, one hundred and forty thousand roughly. And I believe, and I, I can't quote it, uh, but I think that's a lesser savings in budget to personnel compared to recent years. And, and, uh, Councilman Majors, you, you, you brought up what, what just stirred this thought in my mind. During the year, we did do, there was more- During the year, we did do, there was more, I think, proactive management of budgetary that we could see there was some expense that was not going to occur. And we actually utilized, in a true reallocation, we took what we saw was a reasonable takeaway from some personnel lines to put in other categories. So I think, I think that was, it's not perfected, of course, but I think there was a little more active management.
Okay, thank you.
All right, sure.
I believe we are ready for the revenue side.
Revenue side, all right.
And this was looking at the revenue projections for the 2024 proposed budget compared to the five-year plan projections.
Oh, yeah, thanks for blowing that up a little. So we, weeks and weeks ago, we did an analysis, a projection that was really tied to the five-year plan. And it's that first column, as it's described. And this is the general fund and our major groupings, subcategories of, of revenue. And you total them all up, you get to that, that big number at the bottom. But then to back out really what's non-recurring, namely, I mean, the, the fund balance appropriation is, is part of this too, as, not as a revenue, but as, as a source to, to assist the budget. You back that out, and then you back out the, the non, mainly, these are interfund transfers, that, that big number, the 29.5 million, the majority of that is the ARPA funds coming into the general fund for future expenditure. So that, that, when I did this and came down to a recurring revenue of just over 70 million, we all, we all felt, and we had collective discussions with, with different offices, including the City Controller's Office. We felt that was a good, you know, good sweet spot for what the city tends to produce. So when we started building the '24 budget, you can see we, in, in many of the categories, we held, we held true to that. But recent times have shown increases that we believe are reasonable to increase some of our lines, including the LST, in particular, the EIT. Just for current year 2023, right now, we are right around 17.7 million with, you know, a few more deposit days to go. We could very well get inch, inch close to 18 million for, just for 2023 alone, due to market economic factors that are driving that. The LST is a bit of an increase, but it's, it's not as significant as what we're doing with EIT. The other highlighted amount, public safety revenue includes a new revenue item related to the school district involving crossing guards, and there's a, an agreement that, that relates to that where 60%, sorry, 60% can be billed to the school district. That's not a dramatic increase in public safety revenue. But coming down to interest income, that's really, we're, we're already at over 800,000 for 2023. So we, we're a little conservative, but it's still an increase because of where interest rates have been. Don't expect them to fall dramatically compared to current year going into next year. Miscellaneous revenue, this comes back to what you've experienced from our recent reallocations about medical claim expenditures, healthcare costs. But what couples with that, which is helpful, is the stop-loss revenue that the city has to, to offset that expense. You know, very heavy claims have occurred in, in the current year. So we've bumped that up because it's, we'll probably experience, hopefully not as severe, but I, I wouldn't expect it to drop or, you know, drop under 10 million or be around 10 million like it has been in, in not too long ago years. So that's the miscellaneous. The intergovernmental revenue of 270,000, that's mostly driven by the, the Commonwealth's, the pension system state aid that the city gets annually. We, we, we did better this year. We budgeted 3.4, but we actually received 3.7. So we expect a similar result for 2024, so we, we increased that revenue. So, and then there's the items where I say, I don't mean to discount them so much. I say relatively immaterial, but they, they are in the sense when you think of the total revenue. But there are increases, there are four, four or five lines up there that have also increases that I, I just didn't highlight, but they, they're, they're modest in comparison to the ones that I did. So in the end, you give the same treatment to that column, and you, you reduce the fund balance appropriation that's being proposed. You back out the interfund activity. So you can see our revenue, our, our more recurring revenue, 72.2 million, and the increase of 2.1 over 2023. And those highlighted amounts account for 1.9 million of that 2.17. So that's the, the scenario on, on what's being proposed for next year in our '24 budget.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding the revenue projections? Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Brian, for joining us as always. Great job. The projections for the crossing guard, that revenue, is that projected off of the 60-40 split that will just pay the employee and the district will compensate?
I, I believe that's correct. The 60% I know is what I'm remembering from our notes, yep.
And then the overage for the staff for the summer, when we kept everyone employed instead of laying people off, where would that reflect or show the being pulled?
That one, I'm not too clear on. Can I?
Yeah, absolutely, if you can get that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Unless, you have a sense of that, Merida?
Well, it's not so much a revenue.
No, 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 that was.
He's going to be doing expenses and maybe getting.
Yeah, thank you, yeah. Yep, that's it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, sure.
Any other questions? Seeing none, if you'd like to continue.
Okay, that actually was, those two schedules that we reviewed today, that, that was my main focus. So the, again, that's the, the wrap-up of current year projection and then, you know, focus on the revenue.
Thank you. I believe Merida has a portion that she is going to, to present on Neighborhood Services.
Yes, thank you very much.
I apologize. It should be Director Kelly.
That's okay, no problem. What we have before you, last week, we had some questions about some of the driving expenditures over the eight-year period since the Neighborhood Services Fund has been in existence. And so we did a schedule for the eight-year period, including 2023, year-to-date as of yesterday, 20, I'm sorry, 12-18-2023. So as you can see from the schedule, I thought would, to make it easier for, especially Mr. Majors and Ms. Daniels, who asked a specific question, where the driving factors are in terms of expenditures. Obviously, salaries is a factor for city services. The first two years, 2016 and 2017, you will not see any activity for park maintenance because it did not come into fruition, fruition in terms of an activity, park maintenance and neighborhood services until 2018. So if you see at the bottom of the, the report for '16 and '17, you will not see any activity for park maintenance. But I will go over the highlighted expenditures. Obviously, salaries were certainly a factor, increasing over that time period for, this is for city services, except for in 2018, it does have a combined city service and park maintenance, because that was their startup year. So, so that's the only reason why it was combined there. But later in the report, you'll see that separated out for park maintenance salaries. Also, medical benefits, you can see them increasing from 782,000 in 2016 all the way to 1,047,315. The next major expenditure, which we knew was going to be a concern, is, is the disposal at, at the incinerator for Flex Wama. So in 2016, our original expenditure was 5,530,211. And in 2023, year-to-date, it's 7,222,065, and we still have a couple of weeks to go on that. The next major expenditure, and of course, this is relative. I just wanted to indicate that you can see that during a new organization like city services, Neighborhood Services, you have to invest in software. It's not an extraordinary amount, but I did want to point out that, obviously, there was multiple years of increased expenditures for software for the various trash and highway functions. Also, motor fuel, diesel fuel largely went from 100,000 to around 130,000 in 2023. You don't see that, that fee there as of today because, because of the limiting factors leading to Neighborhood Services Fund having some issues in terms of a sizable draw, like almost, what was it, around 180, 150 to 160,000? We don't have the exact amount right now, but, so we decided as, as a department to not draw that portion down for this fiscal year. So that's why you don't see a diesel, other than the minor expenses there. The vehicular equipment, you would expect, you know, some increases for the various trucks and piles and so forth. So 1,337,000 was, you know, one of our startup years. And then you can see, again, we had that expenditure in 2018, and a continued expenditure in vehicular equipment. The lease purchase was kind of the big in the middle years there. And then as we were able to pay that off, that went down. Now we move to, to our wages for Neighborhood Services, parks maintenance. In, trying to see, 2019, it was 685,000. And in 2023, estimate as of today, or yesterday, it was 1,014,000. Also, maintenance service contracts, you can see a sizable sum there for various activities in, in the park maintenance activities. Building maintenance, obviously, we have to maintain our buildings and structures. And, and so you can see that over the period of time, we went from 15,921,000 in 2018 to 16,942,000 in 2023. So we tried to give you as much information. I know it's a little bit of a busy schedule, but it does kind of give you the breadth and depth of how this, this particular, we call it revenue fund, enterprise fund, because it is run like a utility, has, has expended their funds over that time period. So I'd be happy to field any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding this presentation? Seeing none. I appreciate your presentations tonight. I know for me, they were very helpful. So I appreciate you presenting them in public so that the public can be aware of them and so that all council members are aware of them. So, thank you. So I suppose now we look to move on to potential amendments. So I've received several potential amendments from council members. I'm going to do it a little different this year, just because some of these amendments do overlap each other. So first, we're going to read through all of the amendments, and then we'll start from the top to see if there are any seconds or motions, or no, seconds, I guess I'll do the motions. So any seconds, and then move on to a discussion and vote at that point. So. Please bear with me. The first potential amendment says, "I would like to amend the section of the budget that states the city treasurer and deputy treasurer should receive a 2% raise in their yearly salary. I am asking that both parties not receive a raise until they serve Harrisburg residents respectfully by returning to regular business hours." The second one, "I am asking that director's position for the community service aide only receive a 2% raise at this time. I am also asking that a six-month review be placed on the continuation of this position." Next, "I would like to amend the section of the budget that states that the planning director should receive a 10% raise instead of raise of 10%, excuse me, yes, instead of a raise of 10%, I am asking that the position receive a 7% raise." Next, it says, "Remove the position for the director of community relations and engagement from the police department. This position seems to overlap, as it seems the CSD captain is handling the majority of the responsibilities for the CSA program." The next amendment says, "Remove the position for the chief equity and compliance officer. Listening to the presentation during budget hearings, it seems his position duties would be most effectively performed as a part of the duties we assign to our lobbyist firm we are looking to hire." The next potential amendment says, "If any increases are above 2.5% associated with employee performance evaluations, they should be reduced to 2.5% maximum." Next, "All salaries increased within the Neighborhood Service Fund without a clear justification for the 10% increase, the 11% increase, 14% increase, and 18% increase should be reduced to 2.5% maximum." Next, "Reduce the planning director's increase to 2.5%. As Mr. Knight shared during the budget hearing last week, that the deputy director for planning is responsible for serving as the technical advisor and executive secretary to the Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board, which would alleviate those duties from his responsibility." The next amendment says, "The community service," this is more of a statement than an amendment, but it says, "The community service aid program should remain a pilot program without an opportunity to increase to complement of 14 until clear and measurable goals are achieved in 2024." And the last amendment sent to my council members at this time says, "The director of equity and compliance salary should remain at the 2023 salary of $95,000, as it is my understanding that the majority, excuse me, that the minority spend data that has been compiled over the last two years by Mr. Collins, the disparity study data and the mayor's equity roundtable policy recommendations would be coupled to draft an ordinance for minority participation. We have not received the minority spend data, nor have we received the mayor's equity roundtable policy recommendations." There are other technical corrections, which I'll do after we go through the amendments proposed by council members. So at this time, I will start from the top. I make a motion to amend the 2024 proposed budget to read, or amend the 2024 proposed budget to set. "I would like to amend the section of the budget that states the city treasurer and deputy treasurer should not receive a raise, a 2% raise to their yearly salary. I am asking both parties receive a raise, do not receive a raise until they serve the Harrisburg residents respectfully by returning to a regular business hours." At this point, I would need a second, I do believe.
Madam Chair, there's a technical problem with the, with the proposal. The city treasurer's salary is fixed by an ordinance. There is no raise in it, just, just letting you know. And he's actually, if there was a raise in it, this is the time you could vote because the new term's about to start, but there is no increase. It's in, it's in an ordinance. All the elected officials have a fixed salary, and it cannot be reduced during their term.
Thank you very much. So I suppose it was just the deputy treasurer? So then I would rescind that motion and correct it to say, "I make a motion to amend the section of the budget that states that the deputy treasurer should receive a 2% raise in their yearly salary. I am asking that they do not receive a raise until they serve the Harrisburg residents respectfully by returning to regular business hours." Now I believe I would need a second. I don't know if I say this part. It's been moved in second. Do I say that, or does someone else say that?
That's you?
Okay.
Your chair in this?
All right, so it's been moved in second. Now we will open it up for discussion. Would anyone like to discuss this?
I will just add that I completely agree with that because our city taxpayers are paying the salary of the deputy treasurer, city treasurer, and at this time, they are not serving our taxpayers equitably or respectfully. So if they cannot do that, they should not raise their pay.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councilman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I also support that decision. And what constitutes me agreeing is just the simple fact of, I understand during the hardest or harshest months of the COVID-19 pandemic, I understand in cutting down on hours and minimizing capabilities, but we're far out of that, and we still haven't returned to business as usual in that department. And. And, I mean, I have a lot of conversations and a lot of, especially our senior citizen population that relies on coming in person and paying bills certain hours, it's just restricted too. So I just think speaking about the same thing over and over is a bit crazy. So I think it's responsible of us to ask for this action.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions concerning this proposed amendment? Seeing none, Mr. Truesdale, if you wouldn't mind calling a vote?
Okay, so the amendment one here would be the deputy treasurer to receive a two percent raise to their yearly salary.
To not receive a two percent raise. So for their their salary to remain stagnant from last year?
The deputy, that's why we do this, huh? The deputy treasurer to not receive a two percent year, two percent raise to their yearly salary. I will now call the vote.
Could I just get a point of clarification before you vote? When you say to this year's salary, do you mean that the salary approved by council in the twenty twenty-three budget?
I believe it is to not receive an increase of two percent in the twenty twenty-four budget.
No, well, my point is, I don't know that she received the two percent in twenty twenty-three that was budgeted. I did, that may have been resolved.
She did.
They're saying she did, okay. So that's, I was always trying to make sure if it was actual or budget, which one you wanted, so.
Okay. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Amendment one will pass by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. The next proposed amendment is, I would like, I, wait, I move to amend the section of the budget that states the planning director should receive a ten percent raise. Instead of a ten percent raise, I am asking that the position receive a seven percent raise. May I have a second?
I second that.
It's been moved in second. We will now open it up for discussion. So I'll go ahead and start discussion off. I would support this just because the director of planning, looking at his salary in comparison to some of the other director salaries throughout the city, some of the other department head salaries, is markedly lower at this time. Currently, I believe he makes around seventy-five thousand dollars. The city clerk makes about seventy-eight thousand, codes administrator seventy-nine thousand, IT over eighty-seven, human resources eighty-three. So you could go on and on and just see other people heading departments that have salaries that are remarkably higher than his. Also, looking at some of the areas surrounding us and some of the positions, people in the same position in those areas, for instance, Lancaster, as planning director makes seventy-eight thousand. Erie eighty-seven thousand, Bethlehem ninety-nine thousand, Altona seventy-eight thousand. So I think it would kind of bring us into into range, not not taking into account the fact that he's been doing several jobs for several years, just because that can be looked at in many ways. It could be looked at as he needs to fill the positions, then he won't have to do them, which we know isn't just an easy task to do. But I think just looking at the salaries of other other people doing this position in similar areas, as well as looking at people here in the city that are in director roles and looking at some of some of their salaries, I think this would bring us into a line a little better. Any anyone else?
Oh, go ahead. I was just going to say I agree with Vice President Green sentiments about the reasoning behind. I know that originally it was a ten percent ask, which I felt I felt like was over asking, but at seven percent, it allows him to be right on the same level with some of the other directors as well as competitive with other municipalities. So I also support a seven percent raise instead of a ten percent raise.
Anyone else, any other comments or questions?
I would, I guess, oppose this amendment, and I would support keeping it at the the level that was budgeted. That department, to no fault of the director, has had a lot of turnover, and he has still been able to perform his duties and the responsibilities to the satisfaction of this community. I know there's, you know, planning is a very difficult spot, especially when he's dealing with, you know, developers and folks that are looking to come in the city to to do work, and I think the department has been able to function in a in a fair manner to those that come before. Thank you.
I would support that as well.
I just wanted to note, I will be opposed to this amendment. I offered the amendment that will come shortly regarding a reduction of the increase to two-point-five percent, simply because Mr. Knight stated himself in reviewing all of the duties or positions that he performs for the city, he confirmed last week that the deputy director for planning is responsible for serving as the technical advisor and the executive secretary to the Planning Commission and the zoning hearing board, so that would alleviate two of his later night evening responsibilities in addition to the other work that he's doing. So I will oppose this amendment and support the two-point-five increase.
Any other questions or comments?
Could I ask for a clarification? I believe you moved this motion?
And Councilman Rodriguez seconded?
But I thought I just heard you say you agreed with Mr. Majors.
I move, I'm going to move all of these. I didn't propose it, but I'm going to move all of them.
I got, I'm just, that's what I'm.
So, what, did I put this forward? No.
Okay.
I am fine with keeping it at ten percent. I believe that that he's shown his value to the city. I believe that he's shown the capacity to go above and beyond. For many years, he's served the Planning Commission as well as the Zoning Hearing Board. He's done many things outside of what is in his job description, understanding that some of these things are going to be removed from his plate, but they weren't in his job description to begin with, I don't believe. But, so understanding they'll be removed from his plate, I still believe that he should receive that ten percent increase, just because it would put him in a better alignment. I was not opposed to moving it down to seven percent, but I support it where it's at wholeheartedly. So yes, I will move all of them, so it sounds a little contradictory, but I'm going to move every last one of these amendments.
I got where we're at, so thank you.
So the amendment then would be for the planning director to receive a seven percent raise to their twenty twenty-three salary?
Twenty twenty, yes.
That would be.
Seven percent raise to a twenty twenty-three.
I would now call the vote. Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to ask for a little clarification, just because we went in a few different directions there.
Actually, because the vote started, there's not a discussion anymore.
Then let's say no.
Mr. Majors?
No.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
And Ms. Bowers?
No.
Amendment two will fail by a vote of five or six to one.
Thank you. The next potential amendment, I move to remove the position for the director of community relations and engagement from the police department. This position seems to overlap, as it seems the CSD captain is handling the majority of the responsibilities for the CSA program. I would need a second if anyone is interested. Thank you. Now we will open it up for discussion. I'll start this discussion off. So listening to the presentation from the police department and the community services division, as well as the CSA director, it didn't seem like the CSA director had the best grasp on the vision that they wanted to set forth. And I would say we got more of a vision or more ownership of the program from the community service division captain, and so it kind of seemed like the the positions were overlapping and a little redundant. So I, when the program was formed, I will say I had high hopes for it. I will say under under different directors, we had different directions, but it kind of seems like at this point, the direction just doesn't seem to be there, and this position seems like it's it's not contributing to that. Direction forming, it's not contributing to direction forming. So I'm going to open it up. Any other questions or comments regarding this amendment?
I have a question. If the position is moved or removed, excuse me, where will this person go? Was there, are you, is there a recommendation of internal movement somewhere, or someone will just have to look for a new job altogether?
I would recommend, I would say that that would be an administrative duty. If if the administration has another position they'd like to offer to this this person, then, I mean, we do have positions to be filled. I don't think that's really the responsibility of council to to relocate people to different positions. Just looking at the position in itself and what's being accomplished at this time, I just kind of feel like it's it's overlapping another position. It seems like the CSA's aren't reporting to their director and instead are reporting to the the captain of the community service division. And if we're going to forego that, that's the only link in the chain that links that person to the division in general. So I kind of feel like without that, a clear path as to what this position's doing, it's it's not really serving the purpose.
Thank you for that clarification. While it is not council's administrative duty to ensure positions are available, we have approved several internal movements of employees from one position to another. So I just wanted to clarify that, but thank you for clarifying.
Any other comments?
Yes, I had a question. If this position is striked or striked from the budget per se, or no one's in that position, where do the funds go? Are we able to make amendment for that as well? And if we don't, where would the funds then go?
So the funds just revert back into the general, it's just money unspent, so it's not budgeted to be spent, so it just kind of disappears from the budget. So it just reduces our expenditures. It doesn't actually go, it's not allocated anywhere, it just is unallocated, if that makes sense.
Yes, and at later dates, are we able to, as council, ask for that money to go somewhere else, or is that up to administration?
So at any point, there can be a budget reallocation. It has to be brought down by the administration. We can't bring the budget reallocation, but I'm sure the that we could look to work with the administration if there are different things that we'd like to do to reallocate funds throughout the year.
Okay. But we, sorry, just clarifying. Would we be able to make an amendment with the release of the position to place the money somewhere for something, or it just?
So at any time during this budget process, we are able to to look to increase funding in different different areas, as long as it doesn't trigger a certain percentage increase in the overall budget. But I believe if we reduce in one area and then increase in another area, it would be like, it would balance out, so it wouldn't have a net effect.
Thank you.
And if I'm misspoken on any of this, please, if the professionals.
The only place you would be in danger of doing the increase, if you if you move to put it to something completely brand-new that isn't in the budget, then you've funded a spot a hundred percent for something that wasn't there. And that 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 could trigger by itself. I doubt it, because there'd be ways to do it, but if you created a brand-new thing sitting here, you'd have to theoretically re-advertise.
Point of information there, was that just something brand-new, or would that also apply to boards and committees that already exist?
No, it's really not about boards or committees or any of that. That's, it's about taking something that isn't in the budget at all, because the law says if you increase any one item more than twenty-five percent, you have to give the public a chance to know about it.
Okay.
So they get ten days of advertising. And so if you create a brand-new thing, but there's lots of places in the budget you could say, I'm going to put it to this department. The other part is, which I know you all know, you can move the money to another cause, but the mayor has an obligation to spend that money on that cause.
Yep.
You know, that's what happens.
Thank you.
So just so I'm I'm clear, because I think this is what you said. So we could push that money to another department that exists today and and?
And and you could push it to salary, you could push it to supplies, you just could push it to equipment, you could, you know, all those types of things are there, are part of your budget. But, you know, when you do that, the mayor doesn't have to put it, doesn't have to spend it the way you've just asked, you just can't spend it some other way.
Got you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, I just have a comment, and one is, this program was never developed, and this is a really bullshit way of firing someone without actually firing them. And as I suggested when we funded programs initially, we needed to be thoughtful once we hired people, and we just have not been able to do that. So as council, I think if, for those who supported the CSA program, really should go back and develop the program as what they think it should be.
Any other questions or comments?
A comment. I noted when we were, during the initial review of the application amendments, excuse me, there was discussion about a potential six-month review. And I I'm just asking for a point of clarification. We can't include a contingency within the budget document, can we?
They're using executive function, so you can.
I was just making, when we, when it was mentioned as a part of that, and then what the amendment that came before, so I just wanted to get some clarification there.
So the one amendment was pulled, I read everything that was sent in, but the one amendment, the council member said that they would pull that amendment, and then if this amendment did not pass, they would not write off of that one. So it was kind of contingent on if this amendment passed. If this amendment did not pass, then the amendment that the council member proposed asking for the community service aides director to only receive a two percent salary raise at this time with a six-month review, that one would then be proposed.
Okay. And then, again, again, just still to that same point, I think we would still be limited in what our legislative function would be in terms of a review, so we could look at a salary adjustment, but not necessarily a?
Review. We would have no control over that.
Perfect.
I just have another thought. And it was read more as a statement than an amendment, but I offered the community service aid program to remain a pilot program. I know that it was mentioned over and over last week that it is not a pilot program, but my recommendation is the program remain a pilot program, and that I don't recommend an opportunity to increase the complement, because I do agree with you, Councilwoman Daniels, it's not fully developed, and that's just the reality for really anybody in this role to be successful. So I don't know how that statement amendment could be used to to clarify this, but I do not support removing the position altogether.
Perhaps, in in trying to mesh them together and kind of looking at the the other amendments, perhaps we could look at funding it for a six-month period, and then at that time, funds could be reallocated for the rest of the salary if the position is looking to remain. That's the only way I can see meshing them all together.
So it gets tricky, because it's a current employee, and what you would do to do that is you would cut the allotment in the budget in half, but the question is then whether the controller has to sign a paycheck reduced by half. I don't really answer that, because you've just put it in the annual budget as the number for the job. So that's, that's, I'm not saying that's what would happen. I would think there would have to have been a real agreement with the executive branch on on that, how they would handle that change in the budget, because it would look like the salary is half that salary, and the and the controller has, there's an ordinance that says he can't sign a paycheck if it's not funded for the whole year. So, you know, so that's, it would be different if it was a new position, and they're not going to. to start it till July 1. But because it's an ongoing one, it, it just gets, I, I don't know what the answer would be. But I just caution that.
Oh, oh, yeah. Now, I've been promoted to deputy controller, right?
Congratulations.
Oh, no, another amendment, right. Now, I, I was thinking in terms of allocation, which I tend to do, but I, I get what Neil was saying about the danger there. And I defer to him on that because I don't, again, the position is the position, but then the salary would have to be keyed by, as specified. If the amendment directs it to be, to be cut in half, then that's, that's how I would view it as well. But I don't, I'm not sure if it can just be thought of or limited to say for the first six months of, you know, at, at that full amount, where the full amount would be generated during the first six months. I, I, I'm sorry, I can't define it better than that. Yep.
You could put an end date on, on an allocation. I mean, you could do that. You could say this position expires on June 30th, if you wanted to do that. But whether the mayor has to abide by that, just, I'm going to tell you, I don't know that, sitting here. That's a, that's a more complicated discussion.
I'm going to take just a step back because I know we are trying to find a way to, I'll say this. I do agree with Councilwoman Daniels and Council President Bowers about not just striking the position and taking essentially someone's livelihood. I, I never agree with that in a way. However, when you sign up to do a job, you read a job description. If you say yes and you come on as an employee and you say, this is what I'm going to do. If you come in front of council and we ask for certain things and we don't get the evaluations for the program, we don't get the goals that we are asking you for, if we don't get the things that we're placing in front of you and saying, this is what we need to see from you so you serve the community correctly, and this is what we need for you to make sure the program can grow and do what it is it's supposed to do. When do we, as council members, hold that individual accountable?
The, sorry. The only question I have there is, and I, I get pulling from a department, but I don't know if we're pulling from personnel files as we're, as we're doing this. So I, I do get not eliminating someone's positions from the, the stroke of a budget allocation. My personal thoughts, the, the idea of, of making sure that this is still a pilot program so that it's easier to say, we do not move this program forward in the, in the future, is probably something that, 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 at least in my mind, works better than, than saying I want to defund that person's position.
So, so it is not a pilot program? I mean, and, and the reason it was a pilot program had to do with agreements with the FOP. And so those agreements have been fulfilled. And the contract was changed with the FOP at the end of the pilot program period. So that's what the pilot program, that's why it was allowed to start because they were, in theory, going to take duties that rank and file police officers perform, and you have to bargain with that in a collective bargaining. So, but I think that's semantics. I think what you're saying is it seems like it's not formed yet despite it existing. And you're trying to find a way to put some of council's oomph behind holding it accountable and reporting back to council. There are probably mechanisms to do that. They each would require an ordinance type of mechanism. You could put in the, in the budget, a condition that an ordinance would have to come down in January that puts certain conditions on the program. But, because then it's a law as opposed to just a budget ordinance. That's very hard to form, frankly, sitting here at a budget hearing, but it's not impossible.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? So this ordinance, would it have, it doesn't have to be in place before the budget's passed. It can be in place by when?
Well, the next council gets to introduce it and vote on it, right? So, but you could put a condition, I'm trying to think of what conditions you could put on that the position is, expires on this date if an ordinance is not passed to do whatever the way you want to have measurables. That's really the hard part, you know? I mean, it's easy to put in, hey, you want a monthly report. It's easy to, but that doesn't actually, that's not what you're getting at. You're getting at, you want something that's substantive. And, and it's a very hard thing to legislate. It just, it, you know, without, like, especially on the fly.
Right.
You know? So I'm just saying it's possible, but I, you know, that kind of condition is there. You know, but what you're talking about are hard choices that you want to make. And I'm saying if someone has conditions that they, they think, I, I heard you say, I forget if it was, you had a phrase for it, Madam Chair, I forget what it was when you were asking the questions, but basically it was markers or, or-
Measurables.
Measurables. So, but the question is what are, what measurables does the council think? What should be measured? I mean, what is it you're trying to get measured? As opposed to leaving it a blank question? Give me something that you can measure.
Right.
So that's the hard part. But if you, if you have measurables you can put together, that, those measurables coming to you could be a condition of that part of the budget. You can put that in the actual amendment to the ordinance portion. We could add a section to the ordinance like we did for something last year, I believe, where there's a new section, the actual or budget ordinance, and you could have a condition. But, but I don't know what those measurables would be. That is, that is frankly beyond my imagination.
Well, that's our job as council to set those, and we have not.
Well, I think the scope of work would be the measurables, and then failing not to report back on those scopes of work that you're responsible for would be the reason for justification. Every employee or staff member has a scope of work, correct? That would be the measurable of what we hold them obligated to.
I, I, so if council doesn't approve their job descriptions, right?
I didn't say job descriptions.
You're saying scope of work is normally on a contract, not a, so what do you mean by their scope of work?
When they come in front of us, they have obligations to require, correct? I didn't say we draft them.
So, so the obligations are what they're, what, two, a few things, what their job description is and what they're assigned to do.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, then there's a chain of command above that.
Mm-hmm.
You know, starting with, in this instance, a captain and heading up to the mayor.
Yep.
Through the whole chain of command, you know, to the deputy, to the commissioner, and then to the mayor. That's the chain of command. And Mr. Hartman's in that mix too, as the Chief of, Chief of Staff and Business Administrator.
A business administrator wouldn't be over police, that's not a mayor.
That's not a mayor, but as Chief of Staff, she's, she's a manager. She's not, she's not uniform personnel, right? So his policies for managers are managers. She's under the same code of conduct as all other managers, things like that. But her direct, her direct report is the captain, and his direct report, it just keeps going. And she can take an order or direction from the mayor, the deputy commissioner, and the captain. All of them can give her a directive that she, and she has to then fulfill them.
Mm-hmm.
So, so I'm, I'm just having trouble with what scope of work means. That's what I'm-
Well, you are aware that we ask for quarterly reports, right? So if a officer department comes down and is unable to provide those, we're only representing the residents that also request this information.
Right. So you, and you have the right to summon city employees for, to, to report to you and what they're doing with the public money that they're being paid.
So I'm saying without any semantics or anything around, it's very simple. If a staff member, whether it's an administrator or just a regular, you know, ground-based employee, has an obligation to the city of Harrisburg, gets paid for a job, we're not, we don't fire people, exactly to your point. We're just asking that on behalf of the residents, what we ask for, who's doing what? When are they doing it? When we get our reports, that's something we can base judgment off of. We're not executioners by no means.
But the people you can ask that for in terms of, it is the director of that department?
I believe we have.
Well, what I'm saying, as opposed to the, I, I mean, not the director of the CSA's, I mean, of the police bureau. When you ask for something from the police bureau, he gives orders to what they do. What I'm saying is you go to department heads when we, when we have reports to councils. Department heads, they're responsible to have their staff pull things together and to give them to you. So my question is, I don't know, I'm not sure you could put something on a mid-level director that isn't on their boss or their boss already. You know what I'm saying?
I understand what you're alluding to, but I don't know how that applies here.
Well, I guess I don't understand what you're saying then.
Okay.
That's, that's-
Thank you.
Yes.
I just have a, I'd like to go back to the pilot program. Can you please share the date that the pilot program expired?
The pilot program was one year, or six months originally, and then it was extended with a supplemental agreement with the union. I, off the top of my head, I can't tell you if you looked up when you voted to approve the police contract. It was, it was, I think, one year from that day when you approved the contract.
Thank you. And I also wanted to note for the record, quarterly reporting on behalf of the CSA's has not been absent. We have been receiving the information. However, during the budget hearings and through the lines of questioning regarding goals for this year and next year, it seems like the information that we're, we are receiving isn't, isn't what we want. It's not what we're looking for. So I think in redefining maybe our ask, perhaps we would then glean the information that we're looking for of the work that they're actually doing regarding, or instead of rather just stats on calls that they're attending or non-emergency accidents and those sorts of things. If there are other things that we want to know, I think we should clarify that point. But I did not want it to be lost that we're not receiving the information. I just, I'm just not sure it's the right information that, that we're looking for. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding this potential amendment?
Could you reread or restate the amendment, please?
Yeah, so Amendment Three I have here. The amendment being removal of the position for the Director for Community Relations and Engagement from the Police Department in the 2024 budget.
Mr. Trusso, if you could call for the vote.
Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
No.
Mr. Majors?
No.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
No.
Amendment Three, Amendment Three fails by a vote of four to three.
Thank you.
Three to four, fails three to four.
Clarification, Amendment Three fails by a vote of three to four.
Thank you. The next amendment will be, I move that the Director's position for the Community Service AIDS only receive a 2% salary raise at this time. I would need a second if anyone's interested.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So if, if we're having that same issue and we're, we're looking at it freezing at 2%, or, or, excuse me, rising to 2%, it sounds like the overall conversation with the council was that they're not happy with what we're getting to date. So what, maybe we don't, maybe we don't raise at, at all. And we just leave frozen.
Okay. Yeah, just a question. I'm just want to know, that amendment, and I believe, and if my math is off, it looks like the raise that is being proposed is only 2% currently.
That's what it looks like to me.
So then this potential amendment will be null and void. If everyone is okay, I'm going to rescind this amendment.
Someone else can, can double check, but I'm just, just looking at the line for the Director of Community Relations and Engagement. The end-of-year salary is listed at 71,400. The annual increase that's being proposed is 1428. I believe that's 2%. Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment. I agree with Councilwoman Lawson. If the issue is performance, don't approve a raise at all. Just keep it at the 2023 salary until we see the improvement that we're looking for.
Is that a motion, Madam President?
I would, that's what I was about to ask. Did you make that motion?
I'd make a friendly amendment to the Director position for the Community Service AIDS receives no raise at this time until some level of improvement or results are shared in 2024.
I second that.
So, Madam President, that's a-
Give a number.
That's a little vague.
I apologize. So can we keep it at the 20 budget, 20, budgeted 2023 salary?
So what the council can do on something like this, they keep it at the salary, they can do a communication to the mayor and the Chief, Chief of Police that if you're willing to reconsider it based on measures in 2024 that you receive, that the council will remain open to considering that. Because I think that's what you're saying. But that, that's more of a communication than part of the motion.
Okay, yes, that is what I'm saying. We will be willing to reconsider is what I think I'm hearing from my colleagues. So how do we, do we-
So it's just a straight, the, 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 the raise is stricken from the budget for this position in 2024.
Okay. So the 2% salary raise will be stricken from the budget for the Director position for the Community Service AIDS.
I second.
Can I, is there, okay. How many seconds are on the table right now?
I amended the, I made two friendly amendments to the initial proposed amendment.
I think you rescinded the-
Oh, you rescinded the initial. I'm sorry, I missed that.
Yeah.
Okay. So may I just restate the motion?
Would you please restate the motion?
Yes. So the 2% salary increase for the Director for Community Relations and Engagement has been stricken from the budget.
Now I'll second.
It's strike. It will be stricken if you vote to strike.
Is there any discussion? Seeing none?
Wait.
All right.
Per our discussion, I am offering this amendment pending the communication to the mayor and to the police commissioner, noting that the council is open to further discussion regarding this role at a later date.
Any other discussion?
Would it be appropriate to add at a later date in which those metrics will be discussed? Do we need to be that specific?
I don't think you do.
Okay.
No. In the communication, of course, I think we would. But I, I just wanted to know my reasoning for offering the amendment.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Trusso, would you call the vote?
Yeah, let me just, Amendment Four here. The amendment would be the 2% salary increase for the Director's position for the Community Service AIDS will be strike from the 2024 budget. All right.
That's correct.
Stricken.
When you phrase the sentence that way, it's stricken.
I was trying to figure it out over here. We're talking about it. Okay, sorry. I will now call the vote. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Okay, so Amendment Four passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Thank you. The next potential amendment is, I propose to remove the funding for the position of the Chief Equity and Compliance Officer. Listening to the presentation during the budget hearings, it seems his position duties will be most effectively performed as a part of the duties we assign to our lobbyist firm we are looking to hire. Anyone looking to second?
I second that.
Being moved in second, we'll now open it up for discussion. Anyone looking to discuss this potential amendment? Seeing none, Mr. Truesdale, would you call the vote or? Mr. Truesdale, would you call the vote?
Can you word that one more time here?
I move to remove, I move to remove the funding for the position of the Chief Equity and Compliance Officer. And then it goes on to say, listening to the presentation, which I don't think that has to be a part of the amendment.
That's not part of the.
Right. It's just the explanation part for it, so.
So Amendment Five then will be to remove the funding for the Chief Equity and Compliance Officer in the 2024 budget. I will now call the vote. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
No.
Mr. Majors?
No.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Bowers?
No.
Amendment Five passed by a vote of four to three.
Can I ask an inquiry because you've just eliminated a position, but it has a subordinate position underneath it.
I suppose that should be another amendment then.
So are you, are you going to eliminate the city's Office of Equity and Compliance? Is that what you are striking from the budget? Are you, you're going to unfund it?
There has not been another amendment for that yet.
Yes, there has. So there, the final amendment offered, the Director of Equity and Compliance's salary just for his should remain at the 2023 salary of ninety-five thousand dollars.
Except you just eliminated that.
I know, but I'm just saying there was another amendment addressing this position. And, oh, never mind.
I'm just asking if the intention of council is to strike the office. That's what.
All right. Can I, can I ask for a five-minute recess? Adam? Chair?
Yes. All right, we'll take a ten-minute recess.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Rawls, I'm sorry. I'd like to make a comment. And then I'd like to offer a friendly amendment to the amendment on the table. So the first thing is, as a majority black and brown city, with a black woman serving as our mayor, we cannot afford not to have a Director of Equity and Compliance, literally or figuratively. I feel like the vote that just passed, I'm glad we're now amending it at least, but we can't afford not to have one, so we have to fund this position. My friendly amendment to the amendment on the table is to fund the Director of Equity and Compliance's salary at the 2023 budgeted salary of $95,000. My justification is that it's my understanding that the minority spend data that has been compiled over the past two years by Mr. Collins. Now, Mr. Collins serves as the Special Assistant for Director Equity and Compliance. The disparity study data and the Mayor's Equity Roundtable policy recommendations would be coupled to draft an ordinance for minority participation. We have not received the minority spend data, nor have we received the Mayor's Equity Roundtable policy recommendations to inform the ordinance that is pending from the Law Bureau. So that would be my friendly amendment to the amendment on the table, $95,000.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? And just to clarify, this is an amendment to the amendment to fund the salary of the Director of Equity and Compliance at the 2023 salary level of $95,000.
That's correct.
Any discussion?
So you have to vote on the amendment to the amendment? And then vote again on the amended?
Yes, I was just asking, was there any discussion on the amendment to the amendment? And I see green lights coming on, so I just didn't want to call for the vote before I gave people the opportunity to discuss it if they want to.
Okay, so the, I'm all for this, this second amendment, but I understand the reason for the initial call. And, and I can't say that I'm completely opposed to the thoughts behind it, but I also believe that we, there's work to be done, and we can ask for that work to be done. I just don't believe in eliminating this at this time or reducing it in this way at this time. I just feel that, I think a message has been sent, and we may need to send the message a little bit more directly that we would like to see some more tangible results from the office, but I think that there are some results that should be forthcoming, but we need to see more.
Any other discussion?
Yes, hold on, one second here. I would echo the comments of President Bowers that we should continue to fund this position. At a, at that level, I was willing to look at even another number, but I think that would be acceptable in this moment. But again, I think we do need to ensure that we do have funding in the budget for a Director of Equity and Compliance. Thank you.
Any other discussion at funding the Director and Compliance salary at the 2023 level of $95,000? Seeing none, Mr. Truesdale, if you would call for the vote.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
The amendment to Amendment Six passes by a vote of six to one.
Right, and any discussion on the amended amendment? Which would read, the motion to fund the Director of Equity and Compliance salary at the 2023 salary of $95,000. Seeing none, Mr. Truesdale, if you would call for the vote.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Amendment Six passes by a vote of seven to zero.
The next proposed amendment would read, I move, if any increases are above the 2.5% associated with the employee performance evaluations, they should be reduced to a maximum of 2.5%.
I second the amendment.
It's been seconded and moved. If there is any discussion?
Yes, I would like to justify the amendment. I wrote this specifically with two positions in mind, because I have another amendment that addresses the Neighborhood Services Fund salary increases. This one was in reference to the two mayoral recommendation increases that we received and the vacant role of the fiscal analyst. So I just wanted to provide some context.
The motion would probably require to be restated. I think what you're saying is you want to apply it to general fund positions as opposed to Neighborhood Service funded positions, although some of them are mixed, so it gets kind of, that doesn't work.
Oh, I know, but I'm sorry to add confusion. I have a separate amendment that comes next regarding the Neighborhood Services Fund increases that were mentioned. But I, yes, I would like to add it to general fund.
Well, I guess, but it's good. It won't work because we split these job payments between the two funds, as I'm sitting here thinking about it, so.
But are you aware of the two roles that I'm speaking of? They come out of the.
I do, but that's not the motion. The motion was to cut anything that's above a two and a half percent. The motion is, was to cut anything that's above a two and a half percent raise and reduce it to two and a half. That's the motion, that's going to take some math. I think that's more than two people. I think it's more than the, them plus the four over in Public Works. It's at least Mr. Knight as well. I, and the distinction I think you have to make is, do you consider anyone in a different job, like, was it, was it the funding of a position differently? Or was it, um, so that wasn't the people you were considering cutting? Just don't get it down to, are you trying to cut specific position ones, or it, because right now, the motion is to cut anything over two and a half percent and level the playing field, which is the council's right to do. But, but then that's what have, would have to happen, they have to go in and adjust the budget for all of the positions that mathematically are above two and a half percent. And I'm just, if that's your intent, which I don't think it was, the way you stated the second part of it, so.
Initially, it was not my intent, but I, I do have an interest in leveling, in leveling the playing field. So, if that's the case, then I'd like to keep it as it reads.
So, if, are we in discussion, right?
Yes.
Okay, are you done? President Bowers, I don't want to stop you.
Yes, I'm finished.
So, I would say that I, I disagree with that because a lot of people's positions changed. Um, their titles changed, their job responses, responsibilities changed. So, the raises, to me, should be more as well, especially, I know, in the Neighborhood Services and Parks and Recreation. And also, I believe in financing a few, a lot of people's positions changed, their job title, titles changed, and their responsibilities. And I believe they deserve more than a 2.5 or 2% raise.
Well, speaking for the two mayoral recommendations, we only received a few notes on things that, on extra duties that individuals assumed. Now, for the Neighborhood Services Fund salary increases, we do not have any justification for these salaries. So, if the roles did change, if the responsibilities did change, we need to know what, why, how, what's going on. All it says here on this word document is the person's name, their title, or role, if it has changed, and if it's new, and there's a percentage of an increase. And that leads me to my next motion, but we'll address that, I guess, when we get there. But, we need a justification. While I don't disagree with you, and I'm not discrediting any work that anyone is doing, but I'm a firm believer in having some type of record of what somebody is doing.
I can agree to that. We do need a firm record, and I would just also say that, hmm, how do I say this? There should have been more explanation there. However, I don't want to say no to position salaries because someone else didn't put information in there when we know that their positions have changed and their responsibilities. That would be, only be my counter to that, but I do agree with you that there should have been more explanation, so we knew exactly what their different responsibilities were, how their job titles changed, so we can have the explanation for the increases.
Any other questions or comments?
Yes, um, I, I guess this may be more for, uh, budget, and, uh, how many positions are impacted, I, I mean, I know there may be a few that are being, I guess, would be potentially the focus of, um, I guess, the, some of the intent behind the amendment, but do you know how many positions were, would be impacted?
Well, we know there was an order by the mayor that all positions be cut back to 2% in order to bring the budget in compliance with, um, with a more balanced budget, and so, so only those few that you received, unless I'm incorrect, had received more than 2%. Everyone else, at least in, with, at least within the general fund, um, had been cut back to 2%, regardless of their employee performance review.
Okay. Then, I, I would say, I would, uh, with respect to the positions, as was stated by Councilwoman Rawls, I think there, while we could have received more justification directly from, uh, the administration, I think some of the work that we've had to, we've had to work with some of the individuals in question, and I, I can, uh, say that I think we want to ensure that management salaries are, um, are comparable to other positions that these folks may potentially look at, or other folks in that same position in other municipalities, and I think, uh, that the proposal for the couple would help keep that in line. So, I would, uh, be imposed to, uh, that reduction.
I just wanted to note, there are twelve individuals that would be impacted. Now, the first four, their 2.5% increases are as a result of, I'm assuming, a favorably high employment, or, excuse me, employee performance evaluation. So, I just wanted to clarify that.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, I would just, um, just kind of say, uh, I guess, looking back at some of the discussion we just had a, a little earlier in the night, um, kind of discussing the position for the Planning Director. We do need to ensure that we are making our salaries competitive, uh, and then looking at, at the work that, that our employees are doing, so. Um, I don't agree with the across-the-board increase at this time, just because, uh, I do believe there are some, some salaries increases that are, are needed. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, Mr. Truesdale, would you call the vote?
Can you, yeah, clarify what exactly?
So, this is Amendment Seven, and it is, the amendment is, any increase above the 2.5% associated with the employee performance evaluations should be reduced to 2.5% maximum. And then, I would now call the vote. Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
No.
Mr. Majors?
No.
Ms. Rose?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Amendment Seven fails by a vote of one to five.
The next potential amendment reads, all salary, I move that all salary increases within the Neighborhood Service Fund without a clear justification for the 10% increase, the 11% increase, the 14% increase, and the 18% increase should be reduced to 2.5% maximum.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, now opening up for any discussion?
I can share that I authored this amendment, and I think I spoke to it a little while ago. Um, again, we receive no justification for these increases. Again, I'm not discrediting any work that anybody is doing, or the time they're putting into their role. However, there is no justification, it's very much giving, um, Oprah, you get a raise, you get a raise, you get a raise, with nothing but a, a happy recipient, and I, I don't think that's fair to the employee.
I will say, I do agree with, um, with the council president to the sentiments of, uh, there does need to be an explanation provided as to what the reason for the raises are, um, or some sort of justification, just to ensure that we are being prudent with the funds of the residents. Any other discussion?
Could I ask for a clarification? Just because, I'm just about a communication, I was under the impression that council was provided after the last hearing, the changes that were in the job descriptions from before until now.
I, I do not recall seeing that.
Okay, that, that's, I'm, I'm, I'm wondering if it's in a spam filter, because I was told it was sent twice.
Who, who was the, who sent the email? Or the information?
I, I, I did believe I sent that email as well, or had sent that.
I see the email that you sent today.
No, it would have been after the...
I believe there's a, if I'm looking at the correct email, well, I, was it the same email that the management salaries above more than 10% was included, was it a separate email?
It may, I...
I know there were several attachments to that one, with the position, um...
Yeah, for the email that is included in, there are going to be a number of attachments, though, because for each of the job descriptions, there was a separate attachment.
See, I know what date that was, I, I remember.
I have, I have one of Wednesday, Wednesday, uh, December thirteenth at 4:45 PM from Jared.
So, the one that, that I have, um, it says management salaries more than 2%, but the, there are several positions in there that, that it doesn't provide an explanation for. So, if that's the one, then it still didn't provide an explanation for all of the salary increases.
I, I wasn't on the email?
I, I'm, that's why I'm looking at, uh, at, uh, Mr. Truesdale.
And that's the document I'm, I'm referencing for the amendment.
I, 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 I just, because there were job descriptions sent, uh, which was what the communication was, I'm just, was trying to hear, to make sure you guys didn't, literally something didn't get stuck in spam.
Yeah, I'm looking for them now as well.
Okay. It seems like everyone located the email, Mr. Truesdale. It was sent on Wednesday, December thirteenth at 4:45 PM. So, this is the same email that Vice President Green and I are referencing with the first attachment that notes the management salaries of more than 2%. Um, thank you for the job descriptions, and we note that uh, they were revised or updated December of 2023. However, we still don't know what changed in the workload and responsibilities with said job descriptions.
So, um, are we still in discussion? Okay, I know we were looking for stuff. Yeah, I agree that we would need to see what changes are made, because I think we all know changes have been made, and why they're not documented. I don't know how we get that before we're able to say no to, to certain increases.
I believe the Deputy Director of Public Works would like to speak to that.
Thank you, Austin.
Please use a microphone.
Austin Griffin, Deputy Director, Public Works. I believe that the, the job descriptions that you are talking about, there's nothing to compare them with because they're new positions. So, you would have to base this off of these job descriptions that were sent to you.
Now, thank you for clarifying, Mr. Griffin, but I believe Director West said that uh, these operations managers, they were previously other positions, right?
They were managers, yes, but the operations manager is a new position, so.
So, that, if it's, if they moved from a manager to an operations manager and some duties changed, I would have preferred to see their old job description as a manager, or what that entailed, if, if they were managing five people, and now as an operations manager for paving, um, the individual is now managing twenty people, or whatever that looks like. That's what I'm trying to understand in comparison, uh, to the duties and the workload, that's all.
So, you just wanted to know the difference between what they were doing?
Yes.
And what they will be doing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, can we get you that information and then decide this?
I will have to defer to our solicitor, I don't know how, I, I mean, we do have a motion on the table, and if that's to table the motion or to vote it down until we receive the information, is that a possibility?
Well, theoretically, it's possible, um, but I, I don't think at this hour you could do it and not have to simply recess and come back another day. If you adjourn, you have to re-advertise all over again. Um, recessing, you don't, um, you know, but, uh, that, that would be up to the council if it's, that's their preference or not, that would, I won't say it's never happened, but it, it's rare.
Is there any discussion on the recess option?
What is the recess option, like, we, what day, what does that look like?
Well, yeah, you advertise publicly, because required by law that you were going to vote today. A recessed meeting is different than an adjournment, it means the meeting is still going on, and that means you would come back another day, very, very soon, to finish the discussion and do a final vote on the amendments, uh, and the final budget. You have until December thirty-first by law to complete a budget, or the current year budget stays in place.
Thank you for that clarification.
Sure.
So, we do have a motion on the table.
You do? I've lost track of what it is, but you have.
Yes, so it's, yes, it's basically all increase, all salary increases within the Neighborhood Services Fund without a clear justification for the 10% increase, the 11% increase, 14% increase, and 18% increase should be reduced to 2.5% maximum. And we've clarified that we did in fact receive job descriptions, however, they aren't comparable, I guess, with the roles some of these individuals previously had. So, we're not clear on, uh, the work and, and the, the du, the new duties. So, what is, what is your pleasure, counsel?
Uh, I'm going to ask another question first. When you, um, came up with the salaries for the operations manager, is it an across-the-board standard salary for everyone? Or was it based on the position that they were in before?
It was across the board.
So?
As operations managers, they all got the same salary.
And when you created that salary, where did you guys come up with it from? Since this is a new position that you were creating, where is it based off of?
Um, I, I can't really answer that question.
Okay, so it's not like, um, well, you do say you can't answer it.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I guess I was, I was just kind of thinking to myself, is this like looking at other municipalities, or, you know, other, was this, this salary created because, well, this will make it competitive, looking at other places, and they have this type of position with these type of duties, this is the salary that, that they're looking, um, looking to pay, and so we're looking to be competitive with that. So, um, I was just looking for a justification. I guess I was trying to create one.
Is that something Director West can answer, or was this a mayoral recommendation?
Uh, Director West could answer that.
Okay, thank you.
So, he, he could be at the next meeting if... So he he could be at the next meeting if you.
After Christmas before New Year's, it sounds like.
Well, there is a motion on the floor. I guess is there a a motion to table this motion? Is that a thing? So that we can move on to the rest of the amendments and decide whether or not we're going to come back to this this meeting and vote on it, or either table this and have another meeting.
So you can vote on this, whether you vote for it or against it, whatever that turns out to be. The the council members' ability to keep making additional motions, both through this round and through the ordinance for final passage, you have the right, each member, to continue to make motions, as long as they can get a second on a motion related to the budget. Um, so I guess my point is i- i- if you either way you vote for it, whether you come back, it's a different question, right?
Humble, too.
So your rules of parliamentary procedure say you can table this motion. A motion for tabling is not subject to debate. It's a motion, a second, and a vote.
All right, so just a question for you before I make the motion. If we table it until the end of the meeting, can we then decide to continue the meeting another day?
So the rule is if the motion is not brought back onto the table before the meeting adjourns, the the it just dies there, but at any point in the meeting, you can bring it back.
Okay, and if we would um.
And so we're really clear, at any point in the meeting, not just in the budget discussion, at any point in the rest of this agenda tonight, anyone could make a motion to put it back on the table.
Okay. I think I got it. I'm going to make a motion to table this amendment until the end of the meeting, whenever that it is.
I second the motion.
Okay, I would now call the vote to table Amendment Eight. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
We will now table Amendment Eight.
Thank you.
If you could try to give us the information as soon as possible, tonight would be great, but. Uh, so the next proposed amendment says, I move to reduce the planning and that planning directors' increase to two point five percent. As Mr. Knight shared during the budget hearing last week, the Deputy Director for Planning is responsible for serving as a technical advisor and the Executive Secretary to the Planning Commission and Zoning Hearing Board, which would alleviate those duties from his responsibilities. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
It's been moved in second. Uh, now we'll open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I would uh, excuse me, I would uh o- o- oppose this amendment as we have discussed before. There is uh work that has been done uh through that the planning uh department that I think with the constraints that has been faced the past few years. Um, I think uh the mayoral uh request for this uh increase is justified. So I would uh ask my colleagues to uh respectfully oppose um this amendment. Thank you.
I would agree with my colleague. Um, I think I kind of discussed it earlier, looking at the salaries of of surrounding municipalities, uh as well as uh cities in our size um and some of the other salaries here in the city. I think this is justified. Any other discussion?
I tend to agree as well that we want to make sure that Harrisburg remains an attractive place to uh to to come as an as an employee. So I I definitely want to make sure that we uh keep this um attractive uh as a position.
Any other comments or discussion? Saying none, Mr. Truesdale, would you call the vote?
This is Amendment Nine, then. Ms. Daniels?
No.
Ms. Green?
No.
Mr. Lawson?
No.
Mr. Majors?
No.
Ms. Rose?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Bowers?
No.
Amendment Nine has failed by a vote of zero to seven.
All right, the next amendment says, I move. Uh, I don't know if this is, we're not going to read this one. It's it's um, it's not really an amendment. I think we kind of already discussed it, um and it was just about the C S A program being a pilot program, which I think the solicitor clarified for us. And then the last one, I believe we essentially did earlier, right, which is the diverse.
Yep.
Okay, now we will um open it up to any other amendments from council members before we move on to technical corrections for the budget. Does anyone have any amendments that they'd like to bring at this point that were not sent in earlier? Saying none, we will move on to the technical correction to the twenty twenty-four proposed budget. Uh, these are corrections that were provided by the Finance Department um to write changes within the budget. So the first technical correction, do I have to say this is I move still? Okay, I move to change the Department of Planning, the Personnel Line for Salaries and Wages, one zero three three five zero 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 dash four one four zero zero zero. Will change from two hundred and fifty-nine thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars to two hundred and sixty-five thousand six hundred and sixty-five dollars in the Social Security. One zero three three five zero zero dash four one nine zero zero one will change from nineteen thousand eight hundred and sixty-seven dollars to twenty thousand three hundred and twenty-six dollars. The overall total for the Bureau of Planning will change from four hundred and eleven, four hundred and eleven thirty-two dollars to four hundred and seventeen thousand four hundred and ninety-one dollars. Why'd you guys do this to me?
So I so I think you need to ask Finance to clarify what this motion means in light of your other votes tonight.
What what no said?
Yeah, I I I believe this pertains to the Director again of 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 this of this department. Um, so I was I was thinking about that as you were going through the previous amendments. So this, in effect, increases his salary from, as you as you read it, Vice President, from, well, in 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 you read the totals, but but the effect of the change relates to specifically the uh the Director of Planning.
So is the simple answer that this amendment effectuates the ten percent increase in salary, is that what it does? Because it was wrong in the budget book.
All right. So just to explain, there was a a technical error in the budget book, and so by this amendment, we would effectuate the ten percent increase for the Director of Planning's position, adding the increase to both the salary or the soc- the salary and wages in Social Security. Is that correct? I would ask for a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Saying none.
Wait, 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 I have a question. So with the s- oh, okay. Never mind. Amendment Two that was offered with the seven percent increase failed, is that correct? Okay, so the ten percent increase is back on the table, so this will be accurate. Thanks for clarifying.
Mr. Truesdale, if you could call the vote?
Yes, this will be Amendment Ten, then. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Amendment Ten passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Uh, the next technical correction, I move to change the Fiscal Management Budget Manager annual annual increase will change from three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars to two thousand five hundred dollars. And the Special Assistant to the Finance Director annual increase will change from three thousand seven hundred dollars to two thousand five hundred dollars. The resulting difference of those annual increases reduce reduction, excuse me, reductions are two thousand six hundred and forty dollars, which has been applied to the Fiscal Analyst's annual increase for twenty twenty-four. There will be no change to the overall total for the Financial Management Budget. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Uh, would the Finance Department like to have any discussion on this? What 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 caused the need for these technical this technical correction? So it was just a a mistake in the budget book, no changes afterward, just a mistake in the budget book? Any questions? Saying none, if you would call the vote. I was going to say roll.
This is Amendment Eleven here. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Amendment Eleven will pass by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. The next amendment. I move for the Park Maintenance Position Control and Personnel, the Motor Equipment Operator, at a pay grade eight, forty-six thousand six hundred and ninety-one dollars, will be changed to a Sanitation Enforcement Officer at a pay grade nine, forty-eight thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and six cents. The salaries and wages, two five eight eight zero eight three zero dash four one four zero zero will change from one million seventy-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars to one million eighty thousand nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And the Social Security, two five eight eight zero eight three zero four one nine zero zero one zero will change from ninety thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars to eighty-nine thousand three hundred and forty four three hundred and forty-four dollars, excuse me. The Park Maintenance overall budget and munis slash ordinance will go from one million eight hundred, excuse me, one million six hundred and eighty-seven thousand three hundred and twenty-three dollars to one million six hundred and eighty-seven thousand six hundred and thirty-seven dollars. I would need a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion on this technical correction?
If we could please have some justification from the Financial Management Office?
Ultimately, what happened here was um Director West came to me, we wanted to change the Motor Equipment Operator position to Sanitation Enforcement Officer at a pay grade nine. Um, therefore, we had to up the salary from a pay grade eight, which was forty-six six ninety-one, to the pay grade, or I'm sorry, or to the pay grade of pay grade nine of forty-eight, a hun- forty-eight thousand one hundred and nineteen thousand one hundred and nineteen dollars and six cents. With doing that, from looking at the Position Control, it changes the numbers all the way down. So I wanted to reflect those changes to all of the numbers all the way down, um showing that it would go from one one million seventy-nine thousand five hundred and fifty-one dollars to one million eighty dollars, um eighty thousand dollars, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, yes. Um, and then affecting changes to to the FICA as well. Uh, so wanted to make sure it was clear in terms of this is what happened. These changes happen um with these positions, increasing the salary, um making the change to the overall, so we can see it both in the personnel as well as the position control.
Thank you.
So question here. That position currently does not exist within Park Maintenance. So we'll be adding a new position within Park Maintenance, or is this this this?
So part of the technical amendment would be asking counsel to substitute what is in your budget book as printed for um a new a position control that would list the Sanitation Enforcement Officer. So on the halfway down the page, on the right-hand side, it says Labor Three, Labor Two, Construction, Tradesman, Tradesman. It would say Sanitation Enforcement Officer at the forty-eight thousand one hundred and one nineteen instead of the Motor Equipment Operator.
Okay. Okay.
But is the question, is it a brand-new position?
Is it a brand-new position within Park Maintenance?
No, it's replacing the Motor Equipment Operator.
So I'm I'm so I'm I'm just a little confused, because a motor equipment operator would have certain roles and responsibilities that would be different than a sanitation enforcement officer. And this person would fall under Park Maintenance, so I'm trying to get a understanding of what the Sanit- Enforcement Sanitation Enforcement Officer's role within Park Maintenance will be versus now we won't have a motor equipment operator under Parks Maintenance and Neighborhood Services.
I can ask for clarification from Mr. West when we follow up on the table discussion. That will help.
Well, he's not here, so I guess with the clarification coming from Deputy Director Griffin, and he's not in the room. But I agree with you, that's they're not comparable roles. I think if they were comparable, it would be an easy switch, but they're two completely different roles in my mind unless I'm.
They they are two completely different roles.
Thank you.
That and if you recall, the previously, the sanitation enforcement officers were in the budget. So there are job descriptions for them, they were just removed.
Agreed, they were removed, so again.
Right, so it's bringing it's bringing back an enforcement officer is what it's doing. That's what it's bringing back. But I can't speak to the why.
Right, and again, I personally don't have a problem with for bringing it back a position that existed and set to enforce sanitation. With it being in Parks Maintenance, given the restructuring, we have Parks Maintenance, we have City Services. The role of a sanitation enforcement officer within Parks Maintenance is to do what? That's the clarification I'm seeking.
Is this something that Deputy Director Ross can speak to?
Because previously, and again, I'll just note, previously, our sanitation enforcement officers were, I believe they were would have been would have fell under would have been City Services, so they would have been looking at all of the city's sanitation, looking to help with enforcement. Uh, you know, they were going around ensuring that we didn't have, you know, we were looking at illegal dumping, we were looking at, you know, falsification of waste, folks, you know, trying to track down some of the people that were doing nefarious things in the city that we were trying to get a control. things in the city, that we were trying to get a control of. I just, I'm trying to understand it in this...
That position was more important than the motor equipment operator for parks and for park maintenance right now, because our parks aren't going to be ready, probably till like next year maybe, if, at the end of this year. So like next year, we were anticipating on asking for a motor equipment operator.
Okay. So, still, so, the, again, the...
We couldn't give both of them. We couldn't give the positions.
Okay. But again, we would need a reintroduction, I guess, we would need to get the old job description and responsibilities back for sanitation enforcement officer. All right, thank you. Do we need another, I don't want to keep recessing.
All right, so in effort to continue moving forward, since the, the hour is, is drawing late, I would ask that we table this and look to get clarification as to what role the sanitation enforcement officer will play under the park maintenance? As well as a job description, if it's a change from the one that's in the neighborhood services.
I think there's a motion on the floor that needs to be seconded to table it.
Correct.
Yes.
I second.
All right, if we could call for a vote?
Yeah, this is an, an amendment, or a motion to table Amendment 12. Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Bowers?
Yes, so that, but that, but it would be Amendment 13. Am I wrong?
I think we're at 12.
We should, okay. I, I still had two that failed, so, okay.
Oh, I didn't include the... Okay, so Amendment 12 is now tabled.
I would ask for a 10-minute recess.
I'll second.
We stand in recess for 10 minutes. Thank you.
Anyone can return back to their seats. We're going to look to continue with the technical corrections for the 2024 proposed budget. And then, once we get through these technical corrections, us...
Are we moving through the rest of the agenda? Or it's like recessing the rest of the agenda?
After we get through these technical corrections, which, as I said, we have one more left due to the hour. In the evening, we're going to recess this meeting and look to come back Thursday at 6:00 PM here in council chambers. We will ensure that it's posted on the city council Facebook page and website, that some things put on the door. We'll do a press release first thing in the morning to make sure that it's advertised to the public. And we'll try to spread the word as best as possible because it was advertised that we'd be looking to vote tonight, and that was definitely the intentions. But we do want to make sure that we're properly informed and have all of the information that we've requested, even though we requested it a while ago. We didn't just request it tonight. We want to make sure we have all of the information before we do make some of these changes and obviously before we would vote on the budget itself. So, I'm going to read the last proposed technical correction. And it reads, "I move for the city services position control. The count for the street maintenance worker for 2024 would change from three to four. The overall bargaining unit count will increase from 60 to 61, and the overall account will change from 70.85 to 71.85." If we can get an explanation before I call for a second.
Budget book error there. Simply had the wrong count there, I believe.
Could you come a little clearer, a little closer, I couldn't hear you.
That was a budget book error as well. Simply, when we did our count on the position control, we did three and then it was really four for that position.
Okay, so it was a technical correction because it was just a accounting error. It's not adding a new position in that wasn't already accounted for when the budget was proposed. All right, so if I could have a second.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Truesdale, if you would call the vote.
Yes, so this is a vote on Amendment 13. Ms. Daniels?
Did I miss the vote on Taylor?
No, so this vote is for another amendment, which is for city services position control. The count for street maintenance worker for 2024 will change from three to four. The overall bargaining unit count will increase from 60 to 61, and the overall account will change from 70.85 to 71.85. The finance budget manager just said it was a budget book error.
All right, here we go. Okay. Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez? Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Amendment 13 passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Jared, did you have a second on that?
Yeah, Councilwoman Rose.
Thank you.
So, there is another potential amendment, another, excuse me, technical correction that I did miss when going over things. And it is to move the park maintenance, move for the park maintenance position control. The 2024 bonus will change from negative $1,204, or excuse me, $224 to $16,000 to match the amount in the munis/ordinance. The park maintenance overall personnel total on the position control will change from $1,168,785 to $1,186,323. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Can we get an explanation?
Again, that was another oversight. We had it in the budget, but on the position control, when we went through and did the position control, I believe the last year's figures stayed in there, which was the negative 1,224. Or somehow that number got in there. But the correct number, as it is, should be in munis, should be the 16,000.
Okay, so it's just updating the, just putting the right number in because it's right in the budget, but then wrong in the position control? Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, Mr. Truesdale, if you would call for the vote.
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Amendment 14 passes by a vote of seven to zero.
And with that, do I make a motion to recess? Is that the proper procedure? I make a motion to recess this meeting until Thursday, December 21st at 6:00 PM here in council chambers.
I second the motion.
It's been moved in second, if you could call the vote.
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Lawson?
Yes.
Mr. Majors?
Yes.
Ms. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Motion stands.
Can I say something before we adjourn? I just, you know, I just want to say, I mean, before recess, it's 10:13, so my words are wrong right now. But I don't mean to hold anybody up. I just want to say to the public and to everybody who's here, we do value your time. We thank you for being here and doing your due diligence. And for our residents, I think I can say, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think I can say we take your taxpaying dollars seriously. So, we are up here, we're going to ask the questions. We're going to ask for evidence before we pass anything. So, we're sorry we didn't get it passed tonight, but we just want you to know how important it is that your taxpaying dollars are spent correctly. But I thank you for everybody who is here working with us, directors, administration, because it does help us get to the end goal, which is to pass the budget. So, I just wanted to leave us with that sentiment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everyone. The time is 10:14 PM. We stand in recess.